Bore eyes. Almighty God, we, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. We acknowledge this country and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders as traditional custodians, their language, songs and dance. We pay respects to elders, past, present and emerging. May we continue to peacefully walk together in respect and in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I advise that councillor Atwood will be absent today and I move that she be granted a leave of absence from the meeting. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that councillor Atwood be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,664th meeting held on Tuesday 9 November 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Hutton that the minutes of the 4,664th meeting of council held on the 9th of November 2021 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we have two public participants this afternoon. First up, I'd like to call on Mr Zachary Reimers, who'll address the chamber on the statistics and benefits of volunteering. Good afternoon, Mr Reimers. Thank you very much. You have five minutes to speak once the microphone is turned on and one of the chairs will respond to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, good afternoon. I'd like to begin by thanking council for allowing me to speak today and I'd also like to echo the acknowledgement of country made earlier and pay respects to elders, past, present and emerging of me and Jen and its surrounds. Volunteering Queensland is the state peak body dedicated to advancing volunteering for the economic, social, cultural and environmental wellbeing of Queensland. We support and represent volunteers and the organisations that work with them. I'm sure those present are familiar with many volunteering involving organisations that are active in their community and the essential work that they do across all the wards of Brisbane. Indeed, giving your time to help others is part of the Australian and Queensland way of life, but it's been difficult in the past to get accurate data on the value of the contributions made by volunteers. To gain a greater understanding, we released a report earlier this year titled 'The State of Volunteering in Queensland 2021 Report'. The findings presented many things to celebrate about our state's volunteers. For example, in 2020, 3 million adult Queenslanders volunteered, either through formal structures like organisations or independently. This is over three quarters of the adult population. These volunteers contributed over 900 million hours for the common good and volunteering activity provided just under $84 billion of value to Queensland in 2020 alone, not including benefits to health and wellbeing. While the report didn't present findings specifically for Brisbane, we know that almost half of all volunteering took place in the local community and the amazing contributions of Brisbane volunteers can be seen in every suburb. In many ways, we as a community rely on volunteers and while volunteers generously give their time of their own free will, volunteering itself is not free. It requires resources, it requires administration, facilities, equipment, transport, time and energy. We know from the report mentioned earlier that Queensland volunteers incurred an average of $1,600 in expenses to enable their volunteering in 2020. Supporting organisations and volunteers with the resources they require provides a substantial opportunity to remove someone's financial status as a barrier to them participating in community volunteering. The research presented other opportunities to support volunteering. Organisations report that volunteers are increasingly looking for flexibility. However, not all organisations have the resources, time or expertise to invest in redesigning the way they work to allow volunteers to participate flexibly or remotely. The report indicates that informal volunteering outside of the structure of an organisation saw an increase in 2020. From our work at Volunteering Queensland, we know that a lot of the day-to-day support and engagement with volunteer-involving organisations comes from councils and LGAs across Queensland. Locally, we value our past work with Brisbane City Council, with volunteers who step up in times of disaster, as well as our current partnerships around Homeless Connect and community development workshops. We hope that Brisbane City Council are able to continue supporting our local volunteers and volunteer-involving organisations. In particular, we hope that the unique opportunities that our current situation presents us can be used to help build a strong, resilient community that can meet the challenges of the future, whether it be another crisis or a moment of celebration like the upcoming Olympics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Zach, for coming in. And Zach reminded me that I had presented him with an award, so it's wonderful to think that we are able to recognise the work of volunteering. And of course, the Shrinna Council does recognise the very important role that volunteers play across our community, particularly with our volunteers operating the majority of our council's community facilities, and we have over 600 of those. So in fact, just in our committee this morning, we talked about webinars designed to support volunteers and the importance of volunteer hours because we know that people are giving freely of their time. So the ability of dedicated volunteers to deliver high-quality, safe and accessible participation opportunities to the community is critical to Brisbane and it does enhance the livability of our city and builds community cohesion by connecting Brisbane residents to one another. In addition to the community benefits, council recognises the valuable benefit of volunteers themselves, noting the outcomes of greater social inclusion, community connectedness and the potential for reduced feelings of isolation, which is really so important in this digital age. And of course, just having come through COVID, we know the importance of that. Your address to the chamber indicates how that participation in volunteering has changed and council recognises the changing nature of volunteering and including the increase of our online opportunities. And of course, by understanding these changes, we can work together to make that even stronger. So we are committed to supporting community groups and organisations to build their capability to effectively engage, coordinate and evaluate our volunteer programmes. So in collaboration with Volunteering Queensland, and as you mentioned within your address, we are proud to facilitate training to community organisation representatives and volunteers. And so we recognise the importance of those passionate members. You also, I think, mentioned the work that will be happening this Thursday with Homeless Connect and we know that that's another opportunity for people to come together to support others and the importance of that is absolutely appreciated by council. We also have a Brisbane Greeters program which has over 100 volunteers and we know that they not only love the work that they do, but we very much appreciate what they're able to do as well. So council remains committed to continuing to support organisations and volunteers of all ages, abilities and backgrounds, to meaningfully engage with our city and ensure Brisbane is a city for everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come in today and we really appreciate your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Reimers. There's copies of your summary report at the front for everybody to pick up if you'd like to get a copy. Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you. Councillors, our second public participant today is Ms Irene Monroe, who'll talk to the council about melanoma, skin cancer and how council can provide support. Ms Monroe, thank you. Thank you. You can stand or sit depending on your preference. Five minutes starts when the microphone gets turned on. There we go. Thank you.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, thank you for the opportunity to address council today. My name is Irene Monroe and I'm the operations manager at Danger Sun Overhead. We are fortunate for so many reasons to live in this beautiful city, in this most fabulous of states, the Sunshine State. One of those reasons is our spectacular weather and whilst we love our temperate climate and have the envy of many of our southern counterparts, our inviting outdoor lifestyle comes with some insidious effects. We proudly boast our many achievements and accolades, but the one accolade we don't celebrate for good reason is the title of Skin Cancer Capital of the World. Queensland Health Reports confirm what we already know, that Queensland's skin cancer rates are sadly the highest in Australia, which alongside with New Zealand has the highest rates of melanoma in the world. It is however a tag that we can shed if we improve our sun safety behaviours, especially amongst some of the most vulnerable and susceptible to exposure to UV radiation, that is our outdoor workers. And that's what we do at Danger Sun Overhead. DSO is a not-for-profit organisation who aim to promote awareness, prevention and early detection of melanoma and non-melanoma skin cancers. We are an industry leader in the provision of skin cancer education specific to outdoor industries. Since our formation in 2010, we have delivered lifesaving UV exposure and skin cancer training to nearly 60,000 workshop attendees. Danger Sun Overhead was founded by Jo Crotty when she lost her husband Rowan Crotty in June 2009 at the age of 43 to melanoma cancer. Rowan, like many of those employees employed in Brisbane City Council, was an outdoor worker, a plastic carpenter by trade and spent his working life outdoors exposed to UV radiation. After losing his battle with melanoma, Jo was left to raise their four boys under the age of five years of age. In Rowan's legacy, Danger Sun Overhead was founded so Jo could share her journey with the unwavering belief that most melanomas can be prevented if people have access to education and awareness about skin cancer. It is timely that I speak before you today as next week is the 2021 National Skin Cancer Action Week. Starting on Sunday the 21st of November through to Sunday the 27th of November, it kicks off the nationwide awareness campaign as an important reminder to Australians of the significance of sun safety and early skin cancer detection. The need to campaign and raise awareness in Australia is critical, particularly because of these sorts of statistics. Two in three Australians are diagnosed with skin cancer by the age of 70 and around 2,000 Australians die from this disease every year. Every four minutes, another Australian is diagnosed with skin cancer. And despite attempts to improve awareness through campaigns such as Slip, Slot, Slap, skin cancer remains Australia's most common cancer for Australians under the age of 40. DSO has developed a highly successful model of training and we partner with a number of unions, employer organisations and RTOs to deliver a programme which is particularly beneficial to those who work in high UV exposed industries. Under Workplace Health and Safety legislation, employers must take steps to protect workers from workplace hazards. UV exposure is a workplace hazard. Implementing a comprehensive sun protection programme, which includes education and proactive steps to prevent UV-related injuries, could reduce the suffering and costs associated with skin cancer. My ask today is that council consider supporting adopting the DSO sun safety programme into BCC workplaces. We know that outdoor workers receive five to 10 times more UV radiation exposure than indoor workers. Council has a great opportunity as a proactive employer to work with organisations like DSO because when it comes to health, we all know prevention is far better than cure. I'm confident that with your help, we can make a difference to addressing this significant workplace health and safety and community issue, which poses a danger to all of us who live in the Sunshine State. Thank you for your time this afternoon and I look forward to council support for this important initiative.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, Ms Monroe, for joining us today and also for raising such an important topic that affects so many of our staff here at council. I'm the Chair of City Standards Committee. My name is Kim Marks. Our part of council has around 1,200 staff who do a range of outdoor work, so it is particularly important for us as an employer to consider what we need to do to reduce melanoma risk for our employees. As you rightfully mentioned, outdoor workers are in one of the highest risk categories for skin cancer and require protection from UV all year round. Our workers are out and about maintaining our parks and upgrading our footpath so that we can enjoy Brisbane's outdoor lifestyle and enviable weather, but this of course comes with a risk of sun exposure. In my past life as a medical secretary, I can tell you I have come across many victims of this such insidious disease. What can look like a tiny little mark on the skin can actually be a cover for melanoma, which actually can be quite substantial under the skin and I've seen the scars where surgeons had to go and cut it out. It's not pleasant. But here at council, we have a well-established zero harm policy. It is designed to help protect our offices in a wide range of workplace situations, including protecting against skin cancer and heat stress. With such a large outdoor workforce, we have a comprehensive sun protection programme to safeguard our workers against sun-related injuries and to reduce the risk of skin cancer. Our approach to sun exposure includes a range of simple, if protective, measures as well as proactive planning and education. As you've said, education is one of the most important parts of the puzzle. At council, this starts right from day dot with sun exposure training included in our new employee induction. Our toolbox talks educate staff about routine screenings and tests as we know it's important for outdoor workers to get regularly checked for skin cancer and to get into the habit of noting changes in their own skin. Our council stores are also stocked with sunscreen and we also have mandatory PPE, which includes long-sleeved shirts, pants and broad-brimmed hat for all outdoor workers in city standards at all time of the year. I can assure you, this is a big change and departure from what it was like in years past where you'd see tradies up on the roof just in a pair of shorts and little house. It's not like that today. But there's also a lot of planning that goes into how the outdoor jobs are organised to help minimise the risk for workers. So where possible, work with significant exposure are scheduled at the cooler times of the day or in locations with shade and natural airflow. We also make sure our staff get regular breaks in the shade to reset and hydrate and use portable pop-up shade if necessary. And I do note that some of the workers down there on the Queen's Wharf have got some of your shade structures up there with their basically sitting out there on the footpath all day. On particularly hot days, we send text messages to remind workers about sun exposure and offer additional training indoors to provide an alternative to working outdoors in the heat. As we come into the summary of your speech today as another timely reminder of all to be to sun safe at any time we're outside, it certainly is a departure from when I was growing up back in the day in New Zealand, which as you mentioned, has one of the highest skincare. We would smother ourselves in cooking oil to make sure we'd go out to the sun to deliberately get burnt. So those days are long gone now. Luckily, I haven't had any lasting effects from those bad habits, but it's always good to be wise and careful. So I want to thank you for joining us again today. As I've said, we do a lot in that space already with our workers, but I'm certainly happy to have a chat to you and see if there's anything else that we can learn from you and your organisation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, before we move to question time, unfortunately, we're having some technical issues up here, which may be evident if anybody's watching on live stream. Deputy Mayor, could you call for an adjournment, please, to allow time for the technicians to come in and fix a few issues here?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that we adjourn until the technicalities can be sorted. Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Landers that we do adjourn for a period of time to allow the technical issues affecting the live stream and other issues here this afternoon be fixed. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, councillors. I'll see you back here when we've got these issues fixed. Thank you. Councillors, apologies. We appear to have everything fixed. We'll do our best to make sure they continue to work. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Shrinna Council last week unveiled the team that will work on the plans for Victoria Park to hold equestrian events at the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Can you give an update on this exciting announcement and any other Olympic plans currently underway?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Hutton for the question. We missed you at committee this morning because we did speak about Olympic legacies and what we've seen in the past and how we're going to use some of that to move forward as well. And it may be 11 years away, but the planning and the delivery of these projects to get us there is not going to just happen overnight. It takes a number of years for this work to be finalised before any sort of construction can begin and that is certainly the case with an event the size of the Paralympics and Paralympics. Take Cross River Isle and Brisbane Metro, for example. These two major public transport projects took around three years to plan, maybe a little longer for Cross River Isle, including business cases, three decades and early drawings, and then procurement and construction and we're finally seeing at least coming out of the ground. But all of that preparation work needs to be done and it can take up to six or seven years for the project to be completed. As said this morning in committee, we're very lucky to have the longest lead time of any Olympics in history to get ready for this. There's no critical deadlines, but we're not wasting any time in making sure we're getting underway to deliver the most successful games yet and the most successful legacy for Brisbane following 2032 as well. That's why recently, we have selected three internationally renowned equestrian course designers to begin work on planning for the equestrian at Victoria Park. Firstly, we have Mike Etherington Smith, Mike Design the Sydney and Beijing Olympic Courses, as well as the cross-country course at the 2010 Kentucky World Equestrian Games. In addition to Mike, Aussie course designer Grant Johnston will join the team, as well as Wayne Roycroft, an Olympic equestrian stalwart of Australia. Grant Johnston designed the course for the 2017 Chinese National Games, as well as multiple Australian national championship courses. The team in the city office along with these three reputable course designers will make sure that the equestrian course at Victoria Park is of the highest quality for the 2032 Games. There are a number of factors which need to be considered when we design an Olympic standard equestrian course, of course. Obviously, it needs to be athlete-friendly. We need to make sure the topography of the site is manageable for both horse and for jockey. Television and spectators needs are mostly part of the design process, as well as managing access to and from the competition days. A test event the year before the Games begins is also required to make sure it functions the way that the IOC has approved it to. As the Lord Mayor mentioned in his speech to the IOC back in May, all our facilities will be stress-tested well in advance. As I said, no other city has had 11 years to prepare and it's a rare opportunity to create an Olympic venue just two kilometres from the CBD. Since the golf course closed, Victoria Park has become a popular place for residents to picnic, walk or simply enjoy the fresh air. With border rules relaxing, we're looking forward to welcoming Grant, Mike and Wayne in person to our newly minted Olympic city to start on the groundwork. In other Olympic news, the OCOG bill is going through due process at the moment and is currently scheduled for Gazettele in December. This is the vehicle which will include the infrastructure delivery, the volunteer coordination, the planning work, the ticketing and the sponsorship amongst many other things. Councillors may have seen that Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna recently appointed Mayor Karen Williams through the South East Queensland Council of Mayors to the OCOG board. We look forward to Karen being a strong female choice to represent the council of mayors on a global scale. In addition to this, council has made a formal offer to purchase the Visi Glass Factory in South Brisbane, a site which has been nominated as the International Broadcast Centre for the Games and will be homebase to 40,000 journalists and staff from TV networks that will come to Brisbane for the Games. Obviously, no major city needs a permanent purpose-built international media centre, so when the Games wrap up, they will transform that into a seven hectare site with a brand new riverside parkland. We have a golden opportunity for our city, state and country and we look forward to continuing our efforts in Games preparation for years to come.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, a significant jacaranda tree which residents believe was planted about 100 years ago as a memorial tree for a resident whose son died in World War One, this morning was about to be cut down. This is at 20 Sheffield Street, Oxley. The tree does not have a VPO on it. We've checked. I've written to your office this morning and I'm urgently requesting that you put an interim protection order over the jacaranda tree to protect it at 20 Sheffield Street, Oxley, until a fulsome investigation into establishing a VPO can be undertaken. This is time-sensitive as the tree was going to be cut down this morning, but residents' protests meant the tree loppers left. Will you please intervene to save the significant memorial tree at 20 Sheffield Street, Oxley?
Thank you. Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Johnston for the question through you, Mr Chair. Look, I'm happy to have a look at your correspondence from this morning and get this issue looked at as soon as possible. We appreciate you raising it.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you. My question this afternoon is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, details of the Shrinna Council's West End Green Bridge were released this week. Can you please update the chamber on the latest plans that will soon get underway?
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you to councillor Owen for the question. We know that with every week that passes, our city becomes better connected for walkers and riders thanks to the Shrinna Council's investment in green transport. We know that to deliver a cleaner city and a healthier community, we have to deliver infrastructure that will encourage more people to leave the car at home. The Shrinna Council's Green Bridges Programme is a critical part of our plan to deliver a network that's easier to navigate by foot, bike or scooter. The Green Bridges Programme is all about connectivity, providing much-needed cross-river connections and linking some of our most active commercial precincts and growing residential areas. Just like the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek Green Bridges, the West End Bridges are two missing puzzle pieces in the city's transport network. These bridges will help close the gap between some of the fastest-evolving areas in the western part of the city, West End to Wong, St Lucia and the University of Queensland. Not only are they needed now, we know that over the next 20 years, South Brisbane and West End are expecting their population to boom by 120%. And at the moment, it takes up to 30 minutes to drive between St Lucia to Wong and the West End Peninsula, particularly during peak hour. These two green bridges will cut travel times by more than two-thirds for those riding bikes and e-mobility devices. Planning for the two West End Green Bridges is progressing well and yesterday, we released the concept designs and preliminary business cases for both bridges. The concept designs were informed by over 4,000 pieces of community feedback received between late 2020 and early 2021. This feedback also informs selection of the preferred alignments and back in May, we announced the locations for each bridge. The community told us loud and clear they want both bridges to connect to Orly Park in West End, with the Tuong Bridge reaching across from 600 Coronation Drive and the St Lucia Bridge linking in from Guyat Park. Since this time, council's planners and engineers have been busy developing up concept designs based on the alignments chosen by the community. For the Tuong Bridge, we are proposing a 280 metre long, single-mast cable-stayed bridge with a curved deck. The Tuong Bridge will have a clearance height of 11.4 metres, a rest point and a widened pathway up to nine metres width adjacent to the bridge mast with seating and viewing opportunities as well. The bridge design is modern and aims to lightly touch the river's edge with a single water-based pier on the Tuong side to minimise impacts on river users. The Tuong Landing will offer new Riverside Park and Plaza, connection to existing walking and cycling routes and the opportunity for a future cycling connection to the bicentennial bikeway. The West End Landing at Orly Park will provide a direct connection to existing walking and cycling paths on Riverside Drive and Hill End Terrace and new subtropical plantings and park upgrades. We're anticipating that this bridge will carry 3,900 trips per day by 2031 and 5,300 trips per day by 2041. During consultation, residents made it clear that they see the Tuong Bridge as the priority, so we have made a commitment to deliver this bridge first in line with community wishes. Now moving on to the St Lucia Bridge, which is proposed to be a 310 metre long, ground-anchored, long-span suspension bridge. This suspension bridge will have four gently inclined masts and a minimum width of six metres with viewing and seating opportunities. The Guyat Park Landing will deliver access to and from the Green Bridge via a ramp incorporated into the park, enhancing Riverside Park space with new elevated viewing areas and walking and riding access from Guyat Park to UQ. The Orly Park Landing will provide access to and from the Green Bridge via an over-water circular ramp that minimises impacts on green space, gives access to high-frequency bus services, walking and cycling routes to and from Orly Park, as well as ongoing connections to Montague Road and Riverside Drive. And together, these two West End Green Bridges will reduce cross-river car travel by 145,000 trips every single year. Now, this is a huge win, Chair, for Brisbane's road network, for our environment and most importantly, for our community, who will be able to spend more time enjoying the city's sights and fresh air when journeying across the river. I'd encourage all councillors in this place and all residents to jump onto council's website to take a look at the concept designs. This is now the next phase of consultation for the West End Bridges and we very much want to hear what people have to say about these designs. want to hear what people have to say about these designs. Feedback will help inform the final designs and business cases. From now until the 28th of February 2022, the community can have their say via an online survey on council's website, or they can drop into any of the 10 information sessions being hosted between now and mid-February. As well as progressing consultation and the final design, one of the next steps will be making a strong case to the Queensland and Australian governments to help support delivery of these two iconic bridges.
councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, in New South Wales, the Liberal National Government orders their trams from Europe, trains from India, South Korea and China, ferries from Indonesia and buses from Malaysia. Here in Brisbane, this LMP-run council is no different, of course, ordering electric buses from China, the big Bendy buses from Switzerland and playground equipment from Europe as well. So it doesn't matter where you are, if the LMP are in charge, you can guarantee local jobs will be snubbed. Why does not supporting local manufacturing run so deep in the LMP's DNA?
councillor Cunningham.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Cassidy for the question. The Shrinna Council's bi-local procurement policy actually backs Brisbane businesses, and I'm pleased to be able to talk about it today because we're ensuring that local suppliers are given the best opportunity to deliver council services and products. This Lord Mayor increased our spend with local businesses to over 80%. And in fact, last financial year, our spend was 80.25%, or $948 million. This is up 67% from just a few years ago, up from 67% just a few years ago under Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner. We want to ensure that-
councillor Johnston, please.
We want to ensure the work that council undertakes benefits these businesses and supports local jobs, and we know that despite what those opposites say. We're supporting a whole range of local industry in Brisbane, more so than what the Labour Opposition has done. They would do well to learn from our record.
Further questions? councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the state government has convened a meeting with stakeholders next week regarding safety of e-scooters on our streets. Can you outline what council is hoping to achieve from this meeting?
councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, councillor Hammond, for the question. There's no doubt that e-mobility has changed how locals and visitors get around Brisbane, giving more people opportunities to leave the car at home and to embrace green transport. As with all forms of transport, safety is key. We saw that last week with the unfortunate accident in Fortitude Valley, and it's a timely reminder for all those who ride to remember to always wear a helmet, to not use your phone or ride under the influence of alcohol, and to always ride to the conditions slowing down around other people. E-mobility is helping to solve public transport's last-mile problem, with up to 50% of Brisbane riders using e-scooters to replace a car trip. Indeed, since our first trial in 2018, we've seen over 5 million e-mobility trips taken in the River City, more than city cycle achieved in a decade. With our current operators, we have a fleet of 2,000 e-scooters and 800 e-bikes, and over 8,000 trips are being taken every single day. The Shrinna Council continues to do its part, keeping pace with the e-mobility era by trialling the new dedicated cycleway in the CBD and rolling out e-mobility parking hubs at old city cycle stations. We've been clear that we want to see a late-night lockout in place, especially around safe-night precincts, to protect both riders and others enjoying a night out, and we are putting the final touches on that scheme as we speak. Saying no to shareable electric scooters might have seemed the easy option, but, Chair, this transport revolution was coming, and regulating the scheme through caps, audits and importantly, through safety conditions was a far more prudent approach than sticking our head in the sand as those opposite would have us do. However, managing e-mobility doesn't just rest with council, and it's becoming increasingly obvious that other levels of government need to start pushing a little bit harder to keep up with the pace of change. We need the Queensland Government, who set the road rules for shared and private e-mobility riders in 2018, to start doing its part, and we welcome the announcement by the Transport Minister Mark Bailey that there will be a long-overdue e-mobility best-practice regulation workshop held next week. Council will unashamedly be pushing for safer outcomes for riders, walkers and drivers as well. It's fast becoming a two-speed regulatory environment where riders of council's shared scheme are speed-limited, have helmet locks and are prevented from riding in high-risk areas due to GPS technology. Conversely, the state-regulated private e-scooters are operating in the Wild West, and council cannot be the sheriff here. Managing speed remains a real issue, and the Queensland Government must change the necessary laws to let police enforce the rules, including ensuring riders are wearing helmets and adhering to road rules. The state needs to adjust the road rules to allow e-scooters in bike lanes, letting them separate from those walking on footpaths. The other critical area where regulation needs to keep up with e-mobility revolution is standards. There's some real junk making its way through customs and into shops lately, Chair, as retailers race to meet e-mobility demands with the latest bargains. There's issues with high-powered models that are capable of highway speeds. The federal government, through the National Transport Commission, has an opportunity to take the lead through model laws and stop the importation of dangerous and non-compliant devices, as they do for cars and buses. Finally, there's a lot of commentary around the number of accidents and injuries related to e-mobility. It's important that we take a rational, evidence-based approach to this, and that, of course, starts with good data. While council requires the operators' beam and neuron to report incidents to us, this has limitations, including customers not reporting incidents to the operators themselves. If you come off an e-scooter and break your ankle, your first call won't be to the hire company, it'll be to the hospital. The data that we get will also not include private users or users in other council areas. I believe the Queensland Government can have the initiative to collate and report this data in a similar way to how road fatalities and hospitalisations are reported to DTMR. At the end of the day, the Queensland Government oversees the Transport Department, Queensland Health, hospitals and ambulances and the police. E-mobility is bigger than Brisbane's shared scheme. As proud as we are of it, our schemes and private devices need to be captured in any data to give us the full picture. These aren't issues that should turn us off e-mobility, and in reality, e-mobility's future destiny, sorry, destiny to be the future of urban transport is already occurring. It just means that cities, states and countries cannot waste any more time in taking a holistic approach to managing the e-mobility industry. And I've written to both Minister Bailey and the Deputy Prime Minister about these issues, and I look forward to seeing a safer outcome for all next week.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My question's to the mayor. I was really pleased to see a bit more conversation about cleaning up the Brisbane River, and I commend the administration for that. The problem we've had, particularly in our area over the last few years, is that often when we report construction sites for erosion issues, council officers don't actually issue fines or take strong enforcement action. They give people a warning or a slap on the wrist, and then the sites aren't secured against erosion, and the next time there's heavy rain, we see more mud and sediment washing into the river. Your own SEQ Mayor's resilient river strategy identifies erosion from construction sites as a significant issue and one of the major factors contributing to poor river health. So my question to you is, what practical changes will council officers be making to address erosion and sediment runoff from construction sites? Will they be issuing more fines? Will they be conducting more inspections? What practical changes on the ground will be made to ensure that we prevent erosion from construction sites entering our waterways?
Thank you, councillor Sri. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In relation to the issue of improving the quality of water in our creeks and our river and ultimately our bay, it is definitely something that we're focused on, not only as a council but as a region of councils. And as councillor Sri is aware, for some years now, we've been investing the funds from Brisbane Rate Payers into projects outside of the city of Brisbane, in the upper catchment of Brisbane, and including the Bremma, to make sure that we're dealing with the sedimentation problems that are coming. And those problems, if you listen to Healthy Land and Water and the research that they've done, they will tell you that 80% of the sedimentation comes from just 20% of the catchment. And that is not within the city of Brisbane, that is actually within those farming, the rich farming areas, where you get a big storm or a downpour, and rich farming soil ends up into the local creeks and rivers and ultimately into the bay. Now, obviously, that's where the lion's share of effort needs to go, because 80% of the sediment is coming from that. But locally, we have a rightful expectation that where someone is doing construction and they're doing earthworks, that they put in place appropriate and safe anti-sedimentation treatments on those sites. And so they're often simple devices which include effectively-
Sandbagging.
Sandbagging or mesh barriers that, or, what's the word? Yeah, what's the word? Can someone help me out with the word? It's like shade sale material that traps the sedimentation. And we expect those around every construction site, and we do have an ongoing compliance regime.
councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. Just on relevance, I don't mind if the deputy mayor answers the question, I'm happy for either of you to answer it, but just on, just on, no, I wasn't being cheeky, honestly, it's fine.
councillor Sri, come on.
But just on, just on relevance, it was what, what practical changes are going to be made? What are you going to do differently going forward in terms of enforcement around construction sites?
Lord Mayor was answering the question.
And thank you, it would be unlike councillor Sri to be cheeky, so, but we do have an ongoing programme of compliance with our suburban construction management team, which is out there every day, dealing with issues that come from construction and building sites across the city. Now, we proactively established this because we knew that there needed to be a specific capability to respond to those sort of matters.
councillor Sri, sorry, you can't keep interrupting the answer when an answer's being provided. Are you claiming irrelevance to the answer?
The question was very specific. The question was, what's going to change? What are, what's council going to do differently?
councillor Sri, the Lord Mayor is answering the question.
And so the answer is that we have already changed our procedures with the introduction of the suburban construction management team, so that they can respond quickly and deal with these kind of matters. And so whether it's a, a matter of sedimentation or sediment control, or whether it's a matter of someone doing work outside of the operating hours that they're permitted to do work, or whether it's unreasonable impacts on the surrounding neighbours, we have a team that is out there every day monitoring and making sure that our rules and regulations are enforced. And so we will continue to do that, and that is something that we've already proactively taken action on. Now, I know that there's no problem that councillor Sri has ever come up with that can't be solved by taxing developers, and I know that's his go-to policy on everything. It's either billionaires or developers, you know, you can solve all the world's problems by taxing billionaires or developers, but that's a simplistic view of reality. What we know is that we expect compliance, and that's our outcome that we, that we seek always. This is not about fining people for the sake of fining people, it's about getting compliance. Why? Because if we get compliance, then we don't get the impacts on our creeks and rivers. That's our aim. Councillor Sri might like to see more fines, but we'd like to see more compliance. And I think if we do that and continue working with our suburban construction management team to achieve that compliance, we can get a better outcome for our rivers and creeks and bay.
Thank you. Further questions? councillor Adamin.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Tickets to the Lord Mayor's senior Christmas parties have now sold out with record numbers this year. Can you please tell us more about this event, along with other initiatives from the Shrinna Council that are supporting our senior citizens?
councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair, and thanks to councillor Adamin through you. Brisbane City Council is proud to offer seniors a wide variety of fun and engaging activities through specialised programmes and events that help make Brisbane a great place for our residents to live, work and relax. Our city's senior citizens play an important part in the social fabric of our city, and the Shrinna Council ensures that our seniors have access to great opportunities year-round to make them feel welcome and connected to our city. And what better way of making them feel connected to our city than the seniors' free-off peak travel? And I know that many of my seniors, when they run into me at the shops, are always talking about the, the free-off peak travel and how much they appreciate it. I know that they use it to come to City Hall for the, for the weekly concert, and I know that they're looking forward to using it to come and attend our seniors' Christmas parties. So, the Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas parties is, of course, an annual tradition, which invites our Brisbane seniors to celebrate the festive season in Brisbane City Hall, one of Brisbane's premier venues. And this year marks the 21st year of the Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas party celebrations, with each year delivering an event even better than the last. This year's programme will feature the magic of an international Christmas, where audiences will be treated to the very best of Queensland entertainment, including vocal powerhouse solo performances, a swinging eight-piece band, dancers, carolers, a Christmas quartet, as well as a number of other entertainers performing traditional and contemporary Christmas songs. Between the 6th and the 10th of December, there will be 13 shows delivered over five days, consisting of 10 daytime shows and three evening shows. With a total of 870 guests per show, 11,310 guests are expected to attend over the five days of this year's performance. This is the biggest total audience we have ever had for this programme, with all tickets selling out in record time. This is real evidence of just how valued these parties are, with residents coming back year after year to be a part of these festivities. It's also a testament to the stellar work done on behalf of the Creative Communities team, responsible for organising and delivering these events each year, and of all of the artists and musicians that put on such captivating performances. I do really want to say a big thank you to our Creative Communities team, because I know how hard they work, and I also know how hard they worked last year during COVID, just to make sure that as many of our seniors as possible could attend those, those Christmas parties. The Shrinna Council is deeply aware of just how important this event is for our seniors, whose enjoyment of this event makes them so special. We're proud to support this initiative that sees our seniors relax, spend time with close friends and enjoy the merriment of the festive season. While our Lord Mayor's seniors' Christmas parties is one of our flagship events, much loved by our seniors, it's far from the only activity that Brisbane City Council facilitates for our senior citizens. We're also proud to support and facilitate the Lord Mayor's City Hall concerts, which have been delivered by Brisbane City Council since 1941, making it one of council's, council's longest-running programmes. These concerts are free to the public and run weekly on a Tuesday between February and November as part of the city entertainment programme, and are well-attended each week by those aged 55 and over. This programme covers a wide range of musical genres, encompassing popular music such as tribute bands and rock and roll, classical music, recitals by classical musicians and ensembles, chamber, opera, music theatre, jazz groups and much, much more. One of the highlights of this year's performance was the Beatles concert in October, where the original event was impacted by COVID restrictions and the capacity was reduced by 75%. To accommodate all patrons and to make sure no one missed out, an additional show was created to ensure everyone was still able to enjoy the show. This saw Brisbane City Council work with the performers, putting on the extra show, and they were excited with the opportunity to have that extra performance. We received very positive feedback from patrons and attendees who were very thankful to be able to still enjoy the concert. For those seniors looking to step out of the audience and on to the stage, Brisbane City Council also facilitates the Lord Mayor's seniors' cabaret, a free development programme that provides Brisbane seniors the opportunity to learn from industry professionals to develop their creative and artistic talents in a non-competitive supportive environment. In 2021, 185 participants were given the opportunity-
councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Not many residents may know this, but a lot of playground equipment around Brisbane has been shipped in from overseas. LMP councillors in charge not only order buses in from China, they snub local playground manufacturers too. The playground at Nudgee Beach Reserve is made from overseas equipment. The playground at Cookerbura Reserve in Caraby consists of a tower, rails, slide, basket swing, seesaw and carousel, all manufactured overseas. That's the same story for playground equipment in Kayanawa Park in Tingalpa, Marri Re Recreation Reserve, and Handland Park in Greenslope- Reserve, and Handland Park in Greenslope as well. Why does this LMP council hate to support local jobs and local manufacturing?
Counselor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I thank the councillor for Deegan for his question. And I think that councillor Cunningham spoke very eloquently about the Shriner Council's buy-local procurement policy and really explained how it works, how we look to eighty percent of our buy being local purchases. And it's interesting, I think, that the councillor for Deegan Ward would cite a range of parks when, in a local, rather, in a recent post that he made, which I think might be the Fifth Avenue Park at Sandgate. What I can say is that the playground, whilst manufactured in Melbourne, was installed by a local business supporting local jobs. So I think to come into this chamber and start to cite a couple of examples where he believes that it was not supplied locally or installed by a local business, I think is unreasonable and a little bit cute. We are working very hard to ensure that we are providing the very best opportunity under the local buy programme to provide opportunities for local businesses to be able to work with council and provide local jobs for local people.
Thanks, Counselor Davis. Further questions? Counselor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, Counselor Wines. Counselor Wines, Brisbane City Council has recently completed an e-receiting trial to make parking transactions at council parking meters paperless. Can you please update the chamber on the trial and any other benefits that modernising our parking technology may have?
Counselor Wines.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to Counselor Mackay for his question. How do we have a modern and sustainable and affordable car parking system? How do we have a, a parking maintenance scheme that ensures that the needs of local residents are addressed and met and the turnover is required? As we know, council first put in a parking meter in this city in nineteen fifty-seven for the purpose of ensuring that local businesses and local residents had a reasonable turnover in the spaces in those local areas to make sure that they turned over at a rate that was appropriate and that the needs of that community were addressed. Since then, parking meters have changed a great deal. No longer do we have the coin-operated automated timer that ticks back, but rather a computerised system that, at points, we can even get measured on our own mobile phones. Counselor Mackay asks an interesting question about how are we making our parking meters more sustainable, cheaper to operate and more modern? And one of the ways that we're doing that is that we are taking away paper receipts. Now, we did discuss this last week, but I'm always happy to discuss sustainability, Mr. Chair. And so, and so this week... So, as you'd know, Mr. Chair, this is a role of the e-re seat paper that we would use in a typical parking meter machine. It is, you can see on the shine of it, it has an unusual waxy complexion because it has to be instantly printed and instantly dry. This waxy complexion and the nature of the material means that it is not recyclable. Council uses approximately two hundred and sixteen kilometres a year of this material. Well, no more, councillors, no more. We, we will no longer be using this. All receipts will now be electronic. The trial has gone remarkably well. And so that is but one way we are ensuring that, that we are ongoing sustainable use of our parking meter machines. For those who are also interested, the parking meter has three mechanisms that break. The machine, the receipt system, the swipey card thing where you know you put your credit card in and back, and the coin machine. So those are the three things that typically break, right? And so now we've taken away the, the paper, the receipting system. Councillors, I have informed the council of this, but you may not know because we've received so few complaints about it, but we actually took away the coin payment system recently as well. So that machine will no longer, will no longer be there in, making our machines increase the maintenance. You know, it was not touched on earlier, but the, the maintenance of our parking meters costs this council roughly three and a half million dollars. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. And to make sure that we can keep those costs down, we can make, make sure that the maintenance of those devices is appropriate and affordable, there are a number of things that we can do. And as I say, this council has received remarkably few formal complaints about the removal of the coin payment system, to the point that I would challenge councillors to be able to tell me when it happened. But there was a, so, like so many things, modernisation response to the COVID pandemic has been a part of this. And of course, the final item, which is the pay pass system and the e-receiting, so once you go, so once again, the, no longer the credit card swiping machine is gone, you can now only pay using your credit card either on a, on an app or using the pay pass tap system. For those who are keen to keep your receipts, now I know that many people are fastidious record keepers in this place, so those who want to keep their receipts, you can have your receipt texted to you from the machine. So these are just but a few ways that we're making sure that our parking meters stay easy and cheap to maintain, stay up to date, and do not necessarily require, do not necessarily require replacement anytime soon. And we do hope that we can, over time, claim that footpath space back. But as I say, this, this, this paper, two hundred and sixteen kilometres used each and every year, no longer. Part of our commitment to sustainability and making sure that we are the most sustainable and environmentally friendly council in Australia. Thank you very much, Chair.
Counselor Cassidy, sorry, I didn't record that. I shall now record it. Counselor Cassidy.
Thank you. Thanks kindly. My question is to the Chair of the Finance City Governance Committee, Counselor Cunningham. Each year, the LMP Lord Mayor pays himself one hundred thousand dollars in a cash bonus that he labels as an allowance. But unlike normal work allowances, it's not tracked or audited. The Lord Mayor can spend it on anything he pleases. He could buy a new car, a new green boots or anything he likes. In the spirit of transparency or on, on behalf of ratepayers, I've repeatedly asked the LMP Lord Mayor how he spends this public allowance, and he's refused to answer. I asked the acting chair recently, but he couldn't tell us, it got very defensive, and now I think we all know why. So as the elected finance chair of this city, Counselor Cunningham, can you please tell the people of Brisbane what this LMP Lord Mayor spends his self-paid one hundred thousand dollar allowance on?
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think you'd better call the RSPCA. The opposition is flogging a dead horse with this one. They come into this chamber every week with no new ideas, just smears. These matters have been discussed at great length. Believe they spent in their last election campaign talking about this, and how did that go for them? The opposition ran their last campaign on this and they got nowhere. The people of Brisbane want to hear the positives about this council and what we are doing for make, to make Brisbane a better place today and a better place tomorrow. And that's what we're focused on in the Shriner Council. More than that, we're open and we're transparent. No matter what the hyperbole of this opposition may use, the people of Brisbane trust the Shriner Council to manage the city's finances and spend ratepayer money responsibly. I'm not about to be lectured on how to manage a budget and public finances by the Labor Party, Mr. Chair. In fact, the expensive office allowance was first introduced ninety years ago. These are the facts. And it's modelled on the expensive office allowance paid to a Minister of the Legislative Assembly. It was Jim Sawley, in fact, that said his own Lord Merrill Payne. Any insinuation that this represents one rule for them and another for us is simply preposterous. It applies across the board exactly the same way it does now when Labor was in power. Mr. Chair, we have discussed this matter at lengths, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Counselor, further questions? Counselor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Standards, Counselor Marks. Counselor Marks, the Shriner Council has now launched its aerial mosquito programmes to put the bite on Brisbane's mosquito population. Can you please give us an update on how the programme has evolved to become one of the most sophisticated in the country for combating mosquitoes?
Counselor Marks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question. Counselor Toomey.
Please allow the answer to be heard in silence.
Mr. Chair, here in Brisbane, we're lucky to enjoy beautiful coastal areas and waterways and sunny tropical weather. But the climate in coastal areas that we love so much mean that Brisbane also has the perfect conditions for mosquito breeding. With summer just around the corner, in the last few weeks, we mark the beginning of another season for council's renewed aerial sprays on mosquitoes. We all know that managing mosquitoes is a part of life in Brisbane, and, Mr. Chair, under this administration, Brisbane City Council has one of the most sophisticated mosquito management programmes in Australia. Unlike those opposite, Mr. Chair, who decided that rundling was the way to deal with mosquitoes. I've seen the crews both in the field and in the lab, and I can attest the officers' commitment to their work. We use a fleet of helicopters, buggies and six-wheel argo vehicles, as well as officers on foot to ensure twenty thousand hectares of land is treated every year for both salt marsh, salt marsh and mosquito, mosquito, fresh... It's like having a mozzie buzzing in the air. It's just like this biz, 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 biz. It's like you just want to slap it down, really. Just want to smash that mozzie between your hands. Our ground-based mosquito treatment plan, programme numbers over a hundred and thirty thousand sprays each year. And Brisbane has over two thousand five hundred known freshwater breeding sites, which are proactively monitored every week and after rainfall and treated immediately when required. We are at the ready to get people on the ground or in the air at a moment's notice, and it's important to emphasise that our treatment programme is scalable to the season. That resource flexibility is a testament to our ability to adopt a changing condition season by season, week by week. The Shriner Council has always committed to making available all funding and resources required to get the job done right. Our focus is on destroying the mosquitoes before they hatch and travel from the mangroves to our residential and recreational spaces. And as always, Mr. Chair, we are guided by our two expert entomologists. We're the only local council to employ two entomologists to drive our treatment programme. Last year, we covered almost nineteen thousand hectares of land with twelve environmentally friendly aerial treatment spays. Mosquito prevention is first and foremost based on science, so when the experts say to spray, we spray. As science is at the core of our mosquito programme, the team are always looking for innovative techniques to help improve our approach. And recently, the lab team partners with scientists and officers from construction to develop a new mosquito luer. The newer luer will be used as part of our exotic mosquito surveillance programme, will help us to detect at the presence of any high-risk species. So the officers out there, the Brisbane Airport Corporation, are on the phone to our people as soon as they get any suspected containers coming in to our shores. We've also upgraded our fleet and introduced two state-of-the-art electric buggies and six argos, so we can carry out more product and reach a deeper watering depth, all while leaving a small environment footprint. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to finish by reminding residents that combating mosquitoes is something we can all contribute to. Make sure you keep your yards empty, water-holding containers, clear your gutters and closing weighing water tanks, and also all helps to minimise the mosquito activity.
Thank you, Counselor Marks. That ends question time. Move on to the next agenda item. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, the eighth of November, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, eighth of November, twenty twenty-one, be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the deputy mayor, that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the eighth of November, twenty twenty-one, be adopted. Lord Mayor, is there any debate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This week, sorry, this Wednesday, tomorrow, marks World Prematurity Day. And this is the Preterm Infants Parents Association, which is a charity that offers practical and emotional support to the families of infants that were born premature. In supporting World Prematurity Day, we're lighting up the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Reddick Cliff Place sculptures in purple tomorrow evening. November is World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, a time when patients, families and organisations unite to raise much-needed awareness in the fight against the world's toughest cancer. We are lighting the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridges and Reddick Cliff Place sculptures in purple for this on Thursday. This Friday is National Ag Day, supported by AgForce, the peak organisation representing Queensland's rural producers and farmers. National Ag Day is about awareness and celebration of our farmers and the regions. Whether they're city or bush-based, Australians are motivated to create a better future for our families and the environment, and we wouldn't be where we are as a country without our farmers and agricultural producers. On Friday, the Tropical Dome at Mount Cootha and the Victoria Bridge will be lit up in green in support. Friday also marks White Ribbon Day. White Ribbon Australia has the vision of preventing men's violence against women and kids. This day is an opportunity to bring people together, to raise awareness and commit to action to prevent violence against women and children. To show our support, the Story Bridge, Reddick Cliff Place sculptures will be lit in white on Friday. I just wanted to, before we move on, pay tribute to a council officer who is retiring, Robert Novke. Robert Novke joined council on the seventh of March nineteen sixty-eight. So he joined at the age of fifteen and is still working in council today, to this day. So nineteen sixty-eight until today. Joined as a junior clerk. He is currently the longest-serving council member of staff anywhere in the organisation. So with close to fifty-four years of service. In April nineteen seventy-nine, he transferred to council's photographic unit and trained as a photographer. Over the next twenty years, Robert photographed all sorts of activities, events and people from the Commonwealth Games opening ceremony in nineteen eighty-two and the Winking Matilda to Prince Charles and Princess Diana's nineteen eighty-three visit to City Hall. Council's Rat Dogs in Action, which we all love, Prince Charles, sorry, Expo eighty-eight, and even inside council's nineteenth-century brick sewers as well. So he's been out in the sewers taking photographs. He scaled the Story Bridge and the roofs of City Hall and city buildings on several occasions to get the perfect shot. In two thousand, the photographic unit was closed, and Rob and his incredible collection of over two hundred and fifty thousand images were transferred and gifted into the city archives. So that's an amazing asset of two hundred and fifty thousand images that we have, thanks to Rob. And so at that point in time, the next chapter of Rob's working life began, and he was selecting and scanning these images to create an online database for the community of Brisbane to enjoy. And you see, there's a number of websites and social media pages which do share a lot of these images. Most people don't realise that it's actually Rob that is responsible for these images, the images that we all look back on fondly to remember aspects of Brisbane's past. We have Rob to thank for that. Brisbane Images was launched in two thousand and two with an initial five thousand images, and today it boasts over twenty-six thousand images and two thousand documents, and has over fourteen thousand monthly page views of the website. And so it would not be the success it is today without Rob. And we all, I'm sure, I can speak for all of us, in thanking Rob for his contribution to our city, and in particular to capturing the history of our city in a format that will now be preserved forever and a day for the people of Brisbane to look back on and enjoy. Obviously, I want to wish Rob all the best in his retirement and thank him for almost fifty-four years of incredible service to our city and its people. Item A is the meeting schedule for next year, which includes the meetings for council and committees and the recess periods for twenty twenty-two. This particular item is something we traditionally do each year to give people the opportunity to plan ahead, and we have the same number of council meetings that we would normally to plan ahead, and we have the same number of council meetings that we would normally have in this schedule. Item B is the proposed purchase of land for the district sports park purposes at Polara, and it's yet another example of how we're investing in the future in a particularly rapid-growing area of the city. Polara, and I was out there just the other day, is probably one of the fastest-growing parts of Brisbane, and together with Rochdale, one of the few remaining greenfield areas of the city that is yet to be developed. And obviously, as that development occurs, we're taking steps to make sure the provision of infrastructure happens and the provision of parkland happens as well. And in this particular case, we've planned for a district sports park to meet the needs of that growing area of the city, and this is about stepping forward to purchase the block of land that will help make that possible. This property is one of eight lots identified as part of our future plan in this particular area. We've already purchased and protected six of these lots, and this will be the seventh. So we're almost there, we're getting very close to acquiring all of those eight lots that we need to create the park. Once this lot is acquired, we would have purchased a total of 12.95 hectares of land for this future park, and this is in addition to the 1.6 hectares of land that we purchased surrounding the future park that we've now protected as important bushland reserve. So obviously, an important submission and something that we're committed to doing, growing investment in our green space and parkland. The next item is also related to the growing area of Polara, and that is proposed resumption of land located at 56 Sweets Road, Polara, for the Polara Stormwater and Park Infrastructure Project. And so, once again, not as sexy as a new park, but very much essential infrastructure to help us ensure that we provide appropriate drainage and flood mitigation work, and also to make sure that we deal with where possible water quality issues as well, capturing runoff and making sure that the sediment is removed from that runoff wherever possible. So, once again, a sign of our investment in the growing areas of the city that need that investment. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers? councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Joe. I rise to speak on all of these items. First of all is the meeting dates for council and committees next year. It's good to see this LMP administration led by Adrian Shrinna is tackling the big issues while they munch on those catered lunches, all at the expense of the ratepayer, of course, in those ENC meetings. And we know those catering costs have gone up 40% at those ENC meetings since Adrian Shrinna took over as Lord Mayor of this city chair. We know over this last recess, the ENC committee hardly even met. When you go and look at all those, the minutes that are required to be published these days because of the changes the state government made to make this council more transparent, when you go and look at minutes, Chair, of those ENC meetings, it's quite obvious that they only met one or two times over that last recess. And the workload that's coming through to this council, but they certainly, yeah, they certainly had a good nosh, that's right, when they did meet, considering the cost of those catered lunches is going through the roof here in City Hall. But that's quite evident on the workload that's coming through to council and coming through to committees, Chair. There's just not that much going on in Adrian Shrinna's administration chair. So it seems that the ENC meetings are certainly just becoming a very expensive lunch date for senior LMP councillors. We certainly hope with this sitting calendar coming through, with, I think, one extra meeting next year than there was this year, that we'll finally start seeing some work being done by this council. Clause B and C are both for the resumption of land in Polara. It's a suburb, as we know, we've been talking about it lately, that's growing rapidly with multiple new housing developments, and the need for better infrastructure and services is obviously growing too, but the needs of this community are just not being met by this LMP council. For years, Polara residents have been calling for bus services, and for years they have been ignored by this LMP administration and their local LMP councillor Angela Owen. Councillor Owen didn't want to talk about it back then, she didn't want to talk about it a couple of weeks ago, and I'm sure she doesn't want to talk about it today. Polara residents have, Chair, no safe pedestrian access in or out of their suburb at all. The only way across seven kilometres of unpaved terrain is amongst construction and heavy machinery. Previously, in this chamber, Labor councillors also raised concerns about the land being used for this sports park in Polara. The vast majority of these blocks have been acquired by the LMP council, are covered by dense bushland and koala habitat, and we refuse the premise that this LMP council continues to put forward, that it has to be a choice between bushland and community facilities. It doesn't matter whether it's in Polara or out of Brisbane Downs. Recently, residents right across Brisbane have made it very clear, they want those wildlife corridors protected and preserved, and they also deserve access to sporting facilities, but there's this dichotomy from that side of the chamber, in this instance, that it has to be one or the other. What this council should be doing, Chair, is looking at options to make sure that sporting field locations within Polara don't result all the time and necessarily in the destruction of hectares of critical koala habitat. Forcing that choice upon residents is a disgraceful way to govern a city, but of course, that's what we've come to expect from this LMP administration.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on items B and C, and once again, we hear from the other side that they have not done their homework, and quite frankly, when you don't understand a ward on the southern side of the city and you don't know exactly what is out there, be careful what you say because, you know, that's where it trips you up. Now, the interesting thing that I think the leader of the opposition has failed to recognise is that between 2016 and 2020, Polara did not have me as their councillor. So who was their councillor? Well, it's a councillor sitting on the opposite side of the chamber. So if they've been calling out for years and years, well, that would have related to the time period between 2016 and 2020, when the area was represented by a Labor councillor. And so they want to sit on that side of the chamber and cry foul now because they've been called out. They've been called out for not doing anything on their side of the chamber. They've been called out for not understanding the reality of the situation, and they have been called out for not being aware of what really is happening. Now, when there is a lot of construction happening, it has come about through a variety of reasons, and the reason that Polara became a development area was because a former Labor premier by the name of Anna Bly declared the Oxley Wedge a greenfield site and was a suitable site for 6,000 to 10,000 homes. So I say, as I get up repeatedly to those on the other side, through you, Mr Chair, that they should do their homework.
Councillor Cummins, please.
They should actually ascertain the facts, and there is a very wise man in my life, and I can say that he has often said the phrase, engage brain before opening mouth, and that is what those on the opposite side should do, because those are very wise words. You should not be speaking when you do not know the facts, when you have not done your research, and that is where it is just so paramount that we get the correction on the public record. Now, the sports field is needed by the residents of that area. They are coming in in droves. There has been significant building and construction since the election in March 2020. And can I say that the residents in my ward don't have to choose one or the other because this council has been proactive? This Shrinna Council administration acquired the land, dedicated it through the Oxley Creek Corridor. We are working on the Oxley Creek Transformation Project. Through previous LMP administrations in this place, we acquired the Sergeant Dan Still Memorial Reserve and dedicated that. We have the wildlife and environmental corridors. We are working on improving the Oxley Creek Environmental Corridor. And the other factor that they neglect over the other side was that throughout the process of neighbourhood planning, the Lower Oxley Creek South Neighbourhood Plan, which was signed off by the state Labor Government, had the requirement for a sports field. So that is why this council is planning for the future. That is why this Shrinna Council administration has fast-tracked into the LGIP to over $29 million of infrastructure projects. That is why this Shrinna Council administration does what is needed to step up in order to represent the residents out there. Now, you cannot have construction without having some disruption. There are a lot of people who are building homes at the moment, and they want to see their homes built. And last time I checked, in order to have a house built, you had to have things come along, like concrete mixers, you had to have brick trucks coming in, you had to have earth-moving equipment coming in. So there are a lot of needs when you have a fast-developing suburb. We have fast-tracked as much as possible the acquisition of the current residential house blocks that are going to be utilized for this sports field. We are also looking to ensure that the drainage issues of low-lying Polara are managed through the acquisition of 56 Sweets Road. We are also planning a whole corridor, a whole recreational corridor, which will facilitate a great opportunity for people to cycle, walk and exercise recreationally, but also provide a safe pedestrian and bikeway route to Polara State School from one end of Polara to the other. So I say to those on the other side, be careful what you get up and say, because when you don't do your homework, when you don't understand the reality, you make yourself out to look like a fool. And this is where it all comes down to, when you know your local area as a councillor, when you work with your local community, you can speak about these things by way of fact. And that's where those on the opposite side are not. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on items B and C, and I ask that item C is taken, Seri Adam, for voting purposes.
Item C?
Yes, please. Just firstly, on item B, it's the, allegedly, the most transparent council we've ever seen, is keeping secret the amount of money that it's spending on just one block of eight that are needed for the sports park in Polara. It's an eye-watering amount of money that council's about to spend buying this block of land for the purposes of knocking down trees to build the sports field. So I'm very concerned about that. Now, I watched the process for the Lower Oxley Creek Neighbourhood Plan come through this place, and we had speakers who came in here, I had residents who were active in local community groups in my area who spoke to me. This was an extremely contentious neighbourhood plan, and from memory, I did not vote for it. It was so contentious down there, the residents were extremely upset at the scale of the development that was going through under the neighbourhood plan. And guess who is responsible for that development? There's only one group of people, and in particular, one person, who is responsible for that, and that is the LMP council and their local councillor, Angela Owen. They supported the neighbourhood plan, they promoted the neighbourhood plan, they forced it through this council, and they forced their views on people. Now, this is actually what that neighbourhood, and I know that there was a lot of concern about it at the time, and I'm still concerned, which is why I'll get to item C in just a minute, but I am extremely concerned about the impact on Oxley Creek. But let's be clear, this is what the neighbourhood plan actually says. It says that the land will be protected, that natural assets are to be protected and enhanced to contribute to the improved health of Oxley Creek catchment, in particular, Oxley Creek, Glunder Creek and Archerfield wetlands. Development that includes land with environmental value should be protected and restored. Ecological corridors should be transferred to council in public ownership to make sure they are protected and restored. So let's be clear, let's be clear, that over the past 10 years, as this neighbourhood planning process and the gross amount of development that is being forced into this environmentally sensitive corridor, the people responsible for it are the LMP council administration and councillor, councillor Angela Owen. So she was the councillor before you as well, wasn't she, Steve?
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, it was a very interesting speech from councillor Owen. You'd think that somehow that she had had nothing to do with all, it was all Anna Bly, it was all the Labor councillors. Well, Angela Owen's actually been the councillor in this place the same amount of time as me, 13 years, and she's voted for every single one of the decisions that's come forward here. So the advice she got, councillor Owen, I hope it was given to you for your purposes, and perhaps you should have thought about that before speaking today, because the outcome of what is going on down here in Polara is because this LMP administration has gone full war into developing an area that is environmentally sensitive and is being raised, absolutely raised by this LMP administration. We know that they're going to buy these blocks back, which the neighbourhood plan says should be kept and protected, and they will knock down every single tree, every single tree on those blocks, to build the sports fields, which we know, which we know from a presentation in committee a little while ago, that councillor Owen's dictating who should be able to play sport on it. So it is just astonishing that somehow it's the big bad Labor Party's fault, with every single decision about this area has been made by the LMP council, who have a massive majority in this place, and councillor Owen, who's been the councillor for that area not once, but twice, and seems to have forgotten. So let me be clear, I don't think that spending this huge amount of money to knock down trees is a good idea. There are certainly types of sports that can be played that don't necessarily need huge ovals. We need more ovals all over Brisbane, without question, but buying big tracts of environmentally sensitive land, that is koala habitat, and knocking down all the trees is not a good idea, from my point of view. And certainly, it's very hard to reconcile the fact that a sports field is required when the neighbourhood plan says that all the vegetation should be protected. Now, I'm not 100% certain, because I've just had to refresh my memory as councillor Owen was speaking, but I'm not 100% certain that the sports field was actually specifically put into the neighbourhood plan. It might have been whacked into the LGIP afterward. I know councillor Owen ran a bit of a campaign with a set standard letter that she sent out to everybody, because I saw all that in the consultation, but I don't believe that the neighbourhood plan required a district sports field. I actually think that's something that the LMP are putting in afterwards to try and placate the poor people of Polara, who are stuck out in the middle of nowhere in an environmentally sensitive corridor. So let's be clear, the block of lands that are being bought now might be in the LGIP, but that's been put in for political purposes, not because of the requirement of the neighbourhood plan. Two, you don't have to knock down all the trees to do this, because the neighbourhood plan says that all the trees should be protected and re- plan says that all the trees should be protected and retained. It actually says that land should be transferred to council to be protected and retained. Instead, it's being transferred to council to be knocked down, developed and raised of any green infrastructure. So this LNP administration's actually doing the opposite of its own neighbourhood plan, which apparently is all councillor Griffith's fault or Anna Blythe's fault, depending on what councillor Owen thinks at the minute. But anyway, item C, I won't be voting for item C, and that's simply because there's not enough information in this report. The report deeply concerns me, because again, we're buying back a heavily vegetated block to put in some sort of stormwater. Now, I do not know what that entails. The purpose of the buying of this block of land is to funnel more stormwater into Oxley Creek. Now, Oxley Creek is toxic, it floods. If you upstream of my ward funnel more water from a massive development into the creek and downstream, the people who will experience worse flooding are my residents, our councillor Griffiths residents, and without more information about the type of stormwater that is being built here, I cannot support this, under no circumstances will I support this. This looks to be a giant drain that is simply going to funnel all the development stormwater off into Oxley Creek. That's exactly what it says it's going to do. So there's no way I'm supporting this. How is it, we're this far into developing a whole new suburb and a whole new district, and there is no stormwater planning that's been done to manage the stormwater for it? So knocking down trees, buying blocks to knock down trees, creating giant drains to deliberately funnel runoff into Oxley Creek is not appropriate in my view. Why aren't we seeing really innovative stormwater retention and reticulation being used in the development of this new suburb? Why aren't we seeing that? Why aren't developers being asked to harvest that stormwater and reuse it in these developments? Why is this council simply building a giant drain, or maybe building one of those, what do they call them, fake wetlands that just funnel the water, retention pond, thank you councillor Strunk, which don't work in the areas in my ward where they are now, they're never built properly, they are not maintained properly by council? So my question is, this is 2021, why is it that this council, which says it's environmentally sensitive, that says it's doing best practice out there, why in new suburbs, brand-new suburbs being built from scratch, why does a report say, well, the roads can't carry all the water, and the drain can't carry all the water? Why isn't it being harvested for reuse with a good reticulation scheme in throughout the suburb? Why is that not a fundamental and basic part of any new suburb construction in this city in 2021? So I don't know, I don't know why these old-fashioned solutions are. We'll buy a block of land off our mates down there, we'll build a big open drain.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Davis.
Well, thank you very much, Mr Chair, and I have never in my life come into a chamber and heard such catastrophising of developing a brand-new suburb, and I have no understanding why councillor Johnston does not want the residents of Polara to have a district sports park.
She's got 17.
17 district parks?
Eight ten six.
Is that right? Well, there you go. However, I know who does want to put a district sports park in Polara for the benefits of residents, and that's our Lord Mayor, and that's the local councillor. They are passionate about making sure that we have green space and sporting opportunities for our residents, and we will continue to do that so that we can make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today for all residents of Brisbane, whether you live in an area that has been developed for a long time, or you're in a new and emerging area like Polara. Once the block at Polara is purchased, it will join a number of other blocks to deliver the new district park, and this is in addition to 6.7 hectares of land the council has already purchased and protected as district open space to deliver even more green space for the residents of Polara. And that means that in addition to the land that we've already purchased for future district park at 26 and 46 Debrys Road, and 33, 34, 56 and 65, Van Deren Road, we've also purchased a protected additional green space at 44 Van Deren Road, 64 and 65 Lacston Road, and 37 Craft Road. So we are doing what we need to be doing to providing those open space opportunities for the people of Polara. Mr Chair, if I can talk to item C, which is the proposed resumption of part of land located 56 Sweets Road, Polara, for the Polara Stormwater and Park Infrastructure. And this is another example, Mr Chair, of the Shrinna Council continuing to deliver for the ratepayers of Brisbane by making sure that we are building the infrastructure that they need to enjoy our great Brisbane lifestyle. Polara has come a long way since its humble beginnings as a rural area, and now it's a vibrant neighbourhood filled with lots of young families. And in order to deliver important stormwater infrastructure for those families, we need to resume this land. 56 Sweets Road, Polara will join more than 3.3 hectares of land the Shrinna Council has purchased as part of the Polara Stormwater Park Infrastructure Project, which is designed to deliver stormwater and improve water quality outcomes, and provide open space and greater connectivity. Drainage projects will include pipes, vegetated channels and wetlands, which have been located and designed to reduce flood risk and improve the quality of water flowing into the Oxley Creek. Not only will it assist with flood mitigation for local residents, once complete, the Polara Stormwater and Park Infrastructure Project will also deliver the new district sports open space for locals to enjoy with beautiful green open space and new pedestrian pathways and bikeways to support our active and healthy lifestyle. Mr Chair, it was a really great presentation that was provided to the EPS Committee a number of months ago, and the council officer was very clear in describing the great work that's been done, this innovative work, so that the water flow going into Oxley Creek was not impacting any more than it needed to across our green space. But it also provides a wonderful opportunity outside of the formal sports park for informal opportunities for local residents to cycle or walk and just enjoy the wonderful area that Polara is, and we are doing everything that we can to ensure that the locals in that area can enjoy the outdoors as much as they can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Further speakers? Any further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to enter this debate, and in particular, the item B, which a number of councils have spoken on. It's interesting to hear this debate about this land in Polara, and it sounds like not many of the councillors on that side of the chamber have actually, or know that site, or have actually been to Polara at all. And I note that councillor Owen before noted that I represented that area for one term. As an opposition councillor, and I think she will understand how resources flow to opposition councils, or don't flow to opposition councillors in relation to that, I actually didn't vote for the neighbourhood plan down there, I had significant concerns, and I note the Labor Party didn't vote for that plan either. It was the LNP and this administration who voted for that plan. One of the issues I had was the significant amount of clearing that was going to go on down on that land, as well as the significant amount of filling of floodland that was going to go on as part of that development. Also, I was concerned about voting for putting or having a toxic industry 800 metres from residential homes, which the LNP voted for. And that industry's still down there, still producing toxins 800 metres from those homes, and I note that councillor Owen did support that industry being that close to those residents. And I'm sure over time, that will be made evident to those residents as they realise the significant health impacts that they're going to experience as a result of that industry being so close to them. But let's talk about this land now. And this land is land that is covered in native vegetation, that is zoned for koala habitat. And this vegetation is, this administration is proposing to clear all this vegetation. Why on earth we aren't buying land that has already been cleared for sport and rec zone, I don't understand. Why we aren't fighting to preserve this land in its natural state, I don't understand. We collect a huge amount, millions and millions of dollars, for bushland acquisition, and yet we only spend 16 to 18% of that money on bushland acquisition. And when you tell residents that, they're shocked, because on the PR scale, they think we're using all that money for bushland acquisition. So this is part of the spin of this administration and of the LNP. This is part of their real record for what they're doing with the environment. There's one thing about the smokescreen of what we're doing for the environment, there's another thing about the actual real practice of what we're doing about the environment. And this administration has a shocking track record in Polara, a shocking track record. And I even asked questions on notice for the amount of clearing, in Polara, just Polara, on private property, council wasn't able to give me that statistic, it was too hard to collate. And then I asked for the amount of clearing of natural vegetation from council land. Now, we have that information, council has that information, the officers tell me we have that information, the planning officers tell me we have that information, the response came back, it's too difficult to give you that information, councillor Griffiths. So we know how much clearing we're doing, we know how much clearing is happening of natural vegetation, we just don't want it to be out there. So the bullocks I heard before about us being the most transparent organisation, transparent government in Australia, is scary, is scary, to think that that is what transparency involves. So I have significant concerns about this, I have significant concerns about this councillor and her ability to deliver on this, and I know that was reflected with residents in their vote, which knocked 14%, knocked 14% of her vote. She only won by a couple of hundred votes. So when I hear, when I hear what a great job she's doing out there, I know that the residents, I know the residents don't support that. Yes, I know, I know that residents don't support that. And nasty, I'll take that interjection.
No, no, point of order. Yeah, come on, that's, no, the councillor who was shouting out, he's a nasty man, he is not councillor Hammond. Mr Chair, that's inappropriate and it needs to be withdrawn.
Councillor Hammond, will you withdraw that comment?
Mr Chair, he was clearly victimising one of our female councillors on the side. He was being nasty, but if the councillor finds it offensive for his behaviour being nasty, then I'll withdraw it.
Thank you. Councillors, enough, thank you.
Point of order, I actually, I find it offensive to say I was victimising a female councillor.
Councillor Griffiths, you went well beyond the content of this committee report, and to make personal attacks.
But I was not victimising councillor, I talked about her voting record.
To make personal attacks on councillors.
That was not a personal attack.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston, point of order.
Point of order. The only thing that councillor Griffiths has said here is that her margin went down by 14%.
That's a fact.
That is a matter of record, on the public record, councillor Hammond has claimed there's victimisation going on.
Councillor Johnson, enough, this is not a point of order. You're debating the point of order.
It needs to be withdrawn.
Councillor Johnson, you are debating the point of order. Please sit down.
It is not acceptable for a woman to use her power to accuse somebody else of doing something that they've not done.
Yes.
Now, that needs to be withdrawn, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Johnson, I request that you, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with section 21.5 of the meeting local law, I hereby request that you cease interjecting and ignoring my rulings, please refrain from exhibiting this conduct. Councillor Griffiths, please return to your debate, but please stick to the issues that are before us in this.
Point of order, Mr Chair, I would request that that councillor withdraws that statement, I find it highly offensive.
Councillor Hammond, will you withdraw the statement?
Thank you, Mr Chair. If the councillor actually listened to what I said, I said if he found it offensive, then I would withdraw the comment.
Councillor Hammond, I'm just requesting you to withdraw, will you withdraw the comment?
I said several times I would withdraw if he found it offensive.
Thank you, the comment's being withdrawn. Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you. Well, obviously hit a sensitive nerve there. Once, let's go back to the subject at hand here, the clearing, this land, sorry.
Councillor Griffiths, yes, I think your provocation is that you're not sticking to the matter before us, please return to the matter before us.
But a bit, point of order.
Point of order, councillor three.
Chair, I know it's a difficult job up there, but it is really important that you employ the rules impartially, and I do feel that it's, you need to keep sight of that. I'm concerned, Chair, that we've seen repeated interjections from councillors on the other side of the chamber, you've not given them warnings, you gave councillor Johnston a warning, a formal warning, when she raised concerns about that. I just encourage you to really think about how important it is that, we all need to have respect for your role and the position you hold there, and if you've.
Thank you, councillor three, I think you've made your point, let's move on, please.
I'd just like to make a point of order, that councillor Adams was interrupting then, and she wasn't held to account.
There's been plenty of interjections from both sides, councillor Griffiths, will you please return to the matter before us?
There's only one person who can answer.
Councillor Johnston.
That's true.
Look, in summary, what we have here is this is an item that's going through this council today, that's going to allow significant clearing of native vegetation that we should be setting aside for environmental land. Yes, the area deserves parkland, yes, it deserves sporting fields, but that should be on cleared land. We shouldn't be, as this administration, this LNP administration, Barnaby Joyce's administration, that's his mate, allowing this land to be cleared, and I just don't support that land being cleared. He's the deputy leader of this party over here, and boy, doesn't it show.
Thank you. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that the council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
Thank you. A motion has been moved by councillor Landers for an afternoon tea adjournment, moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, all those in agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Yes, Mr Chair, it's interesting how you can propose two very good submissions for a growing area of the city, and somehow it descends into this farcical debate about nothing of the kind. But I guess this is what the opposition does. I have to say, though, what takes the cake is councillor Cassidy's comments about catering, because it's interesting, we're suggesting that catering costs have gone through the roof. Now, a gentleman called George Lichtenberg once said that the most dangerous of all falsehoods is a slightly distorted truth. And councillor Cassidy knows this very well, because it is his MO, like literally, every time he opens his mouth, this is what's happening. What we see is a distortion of the truth. Now, what I can say is that catering costs for this building here have gone up, they have gone up, absolutely. But what have they gone up for? Because we're holding more events for the community here, that's why, that's why they've gone up. They've gone up because we host refugee welcome ceremonies here, we host receptions for Sir Optimist International and their centenary, for Rotary International and their centenary. Optimist International and their centenary, for Rotary International and their centenary, for the Reserve Forces Day and our veterans, we host receptions for Early Childhood Australia, we host receptions for our Indian community leaders for Diwali, we host our Lord Mayor's Youth Advisory Council's students in here, and they engage with us, we host our Young Environmental Leaders Network in here as well, and we do give them morning tea and afternoon tea, and so we should. We host the Queensland Bravery Awards here, we host meetings with Indigenous elders, and we had one just recently, we host charities who we're providing grants to through the Lord Mayor's charitable trust, and we do give them afternoon tea as well. We hosted recently the Olympians and Paralympians when they returned home from Tokyo. We had a morning tea to thank the Brisbane greeters for what they do on a voluntary basis, and we had a morning tea recently to thank the Botanic Gardens guides who are volunteers. We host a range of multicultural events here, including Lunar New Year receptions, and soon we will be hosting one of my favourite events of the year, the SES end of year thank you, which does get a little bit rowdy. And so if catering costs have gone up, it is because we are hosting more community events in this building, it's because we're engaging more with our community, and we're saying thank you to the amazing volunteers and community organisations which help bind together the fabric of our community and our society. But if Labor councils really want to talk about catering costs, then probably don't do it just before they guzzle down afternoon tea in the room next door, before they gulp down and slurp down the afternoon tea. I do remember under a previous Lord Mayor, when Labor had the front to raise this issue in the past, and the very next week, we all turned up to the council meeting and we had milk arrowroot biscuits for afternoon tea. And I'm not suggesting that I would do any of that sort of thing, but I would simply say, don't come here and complain about catering costs and then immediately slurp down afternoon tea, gulp down, chow down afternoon tea, because the reality is, if there's been an increase, it's been because we're bringing our community into this building more, to honour them, and to hold receptions for them, and meetings and functions for them, and that is our job. Now, I don't see anyone complaining about the catering costs of a parliament house when they do exactly the same thing. Palashay Government does exactly the same thing, and do you see anyone complaining about the catering costs? Why? Because it's about the community and honouring the community, and we will continue to do that. And so if councillor Cassidy and his colleagues genuinely believe in that, then abstain yourself from afternoon tea. I don't think they've consulted with councillor Cumming on this issue, and I think they should do that, but you're welcome not to partake of afternoon tea in council meetings if you genuinely believe in that. So we'll wait and see what happens there, and see whether they truly believe this. But the reality is, as I said, the most dangerous of all falsehoods is a slightly distorted truth, and that's what we've heard from the leader of the opposition today.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We now move the motion that's before us, the ENC Committee Report of the eighth of November, items A and, yes, items A and B, all those in favour of items A and B, please raise your hands, or please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Item C is in sereatum, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division called by councillor Johnston. Not seconded, thank you, I declare that motion carried. Councillors, the next item before us is the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report.
Point of order, Chair.
Deputy Mayor.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
Sorry.
Councillor three.
Just really wanted to highlight that there's still quite incessant and annoying buzzing coming out of the microphones on each of the mics, coming out of the speaker on each of the mics, so hopefully that can be looked at, or?
Noted, unfortunately, I'm not a technician, I can't help you on that one, but it's been noted and investigated. Okay, can we move on, please? Deputy Mayor, the Economic and Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday the ninth of November twenty twenty-one be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you, it's been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton, that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane Twenty Thirty Two Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday the ninth of November twenty twenty-one be adopted, deputy mayor, is there any?
Thank you, Mr Chair, the Lord Mayor gives the light up the city colours, I will give you the Brisbane Business Workshop mentoring programme for the week coming up, Winning Government Business, How SMEs Can Open Government Revenue Streams at nine AM on the eighteenth of the eleventh, or maybe buying local perhaps, which we are well and truly supporting here, is being provided by our partner GovReady on how to position to partner yourself with government, that's local, state or federal, on the eighteenth of the eleventh at five thirty, On The Couch With JC. Now, I say that, and I'm thinking it might already be sold out, On The Couch With JC, but of course JC is our good friend John Collins from the Trifford and Fortitude Music Hall, who will share his thoughts and experiences on personal passion, new directions, maybe be talking about the Predators, mental wellbeing and the past, present and future. On the nineteenth of November at nine AM, Social Media Strategies to Reduce Risk for Employers from MJT Law, and on the twenty-third of November at nine AM, a panel discussion on creating powerful communities online, hear from three experienced community managers across diverse contexts and industry as they share impactful strategies to grow customer and cause communities online, and that's by Social Mediology, our partner and business expert. So again, please get online, businessinbrisbane.com.au, and let your communities know, your business communities know about the workshops and events that we've got going on at the hub. Last week's committee presentation was on the Brisbane app, and I know we spent a lot of time on that last week in council as well, and I'm glad to see that the initiative by the Shirena Council to make sure we are the most small business friendly council in Australia just keeps growing and growing on its success. The idea is it to be a one-stop shop for things to see and do in Brisbane at this first early stage, and as of two PM yesterday afternoon, we're currently sitting on a hundred and thirteen thousand downloads, so this time last week was only a hundred and eight, so within six days, five thousand, that is fantastic to see, obviously everybody was looking for something to see and do over the weekend, which is great, it was beautiful weather. Separately, there are over ten thousand accounts that have been created, as well as three and a half thousand businesses showing on the app, it's designed to make it easier for residents, businesses and visitors to plan their activities in Brisbane. It builds on the efforts that we've been doing for over a decade now of our twenty-four-seven business hotline, it also feeds into the work that we are doing in the Small Business Roundtable, and as well as on the back of all the fees and charges relief that we gave over Covid, it's our next step to make sure we can get out of the Covid pandemic, out of recovery and into revitalisation as well. We want Brisbane businesses to increase their profits, build their reputation, consequently hire more staff, this is overall a good thing for the businesses, but it's a great thing for our city, and as you heard last week from the Lord Mayor on repeated question, we are shamelessly pursuing this agenda. And no, we're not ashamed at all, we're loud and proud, saying that we will pursue this agenda because it is about businesses in Brisbane. We know not everybody on the other side of the chamber is quite as happy, except for councillor Strunk, the only politician who does have his face on the Brisbane app, but I can guarantee you, the chamber will be supporting the Brisbane app ten times out of ten going into the future, thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor, further speakers? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, just to update you, Mr Chair, when you do press your microphone to speak, the buzzing does stop, so I'm not quite sure, you know, what it is, but when you do press the microphone, the buzzing stops, so that's, might help the IT people in discovering the issue.
Thank you for that advice.
I rise to speak briefly on item A, the Brisbane app, and a couple of weeks ago, I placed a number of questions on notice, which highlighted how much money, an eye-watering amount of money, that the LMP is spending on the Brisbane app, it's almost, it was about four point three million dollars on development, advertising and marketing of the Brisbane app. Now, when this council can't afford to fix footpaths or fix intersections, or, you know, undertake projects in my area where people have died, but there's almost four point five million dollars for an app, then that is the clearest indicator to me that this administration has completely lost the plot when it comes to the right priorities for our city. And before, you know, they stand up and they start criticising and they start saying, oh, but they don't support business in Brisbane, well, that's not the case. The issue here is the amount of money that you are spending on the development of an app and marketing that app, you know, it is absolutely a phenomenal amount of money, and, you know, if there was a way of doing this without spending four point five million dollars, you know, perhaps going to the market and asking for some innovative ideas and going to all the small businesses, you know, that you say are so great at this, but instead, councils ploughed four point five million dollars into this, now, to me, that's an excessive amount of money, so I would just question the value for money that council has invested with respect to this, and whether or not is the right priority when there's so many other things that need to be done, you know, around the city. The other issue, of course, is what's going to happen to this app, so, you know, I suspect we'll be back here in a year or two and council will be selling this app off to somebody, so I'd be very interested to see how this council's going to commercialise this app, soon it'll be, you have to pay for your advertising, or you have to, you know, buy your space or do whatever, so I just have very serious concerns about this. I don't begrudge an app, it's great, everybody's got apps, I thought we already had one as a council, you know, you had a Brisbane City Council app, but that's fine, but I really have concerns over the quantum, and the figures, the figures that show millions and millions of dollars spent on marketing and advertising alone for this app, just show that this council has got its priorities wrong.
Thank you, further speakers? Councillor three.
Mr Chair, I rise to speak on the Brisbane app, it's been interesting downloading and having a look around what's included and what's not included, I differ from councillor Johnston slightly in that I don't necessarily object to the principle of spending a few million dollars on an app, and I'm not necessarily opposed to the principle of spending a little bit of money on promoting it, I guess the question comes down to whether we're getting value for money, and looking through it, I guess one of the main questions or concerns I have is that it's, there's a, there are a lot of kind of unspoken values embodied in what kinds of information do and don't get shared and foregrounded in apps like this, I think, for example, it would have been nice to see issues reporting for, like council relevant issues included in this app, I know we've got other existing software and pathways to do that as well, but if we're spending millions of dollars encouraging people to download an app that is essentially a portal to the city and gives them all these opportunities to engage with what's going on in the city, that would also have seemed to be a good opportunity to create a simple reporting mechanism for cracked footpaths or maintenance issues or whatever, if that's in there, I couldn't find it, I don't think it is though, is it? No. And I hear that, I'm deputy mayor, saying that's not what it's for, and I take that point, but I'm saying that could easily be integrated, if you're spending millions of dollars getting residents to download an app that's about Brisbane and about our city, and is an opportunity for council to communicate with residents, that's the sort of stuff that we should be including as a basic feature, I'm not saying that that's, that the app is terrible or anything like that, I'm just saying it would be nice to see that incorporated, and perhaps that's something that the council administration can look at for future development. Similarly, I would have liked to see a bit more of an emphasis on services that are included in the app, there's a tab there for services, but I'm thinking specifically around support services, so it's really about what information is easy to find, what appears on the homepage, et cetera, I know that there are a lot of vulnerable people who, now they do have smartphones, that wasn't always the case, and it's certainly not universal, but if there is someone who's in a tight spot or is sleeping rough or whatever, and they want to be able to find where the homeless shelters are, they want to be able to find a place they can have a shower, et cetera, it wouldn't hurt to include that kind of information on these apps, if only so that other people who are in touch with those vulnerable people can also find that information easily, I think there'd be quite a few vulnerable people who have no idea about the app and have no interest in it, but making that information as available as possible to the wider public can assist the wider public in also supporting those vulnerable and marginalised people. I do also just want to highlight that while a lot of the talk has been around supporting small business and supporting local business, there is also a lot of emphasis in the app in terms of what it features around what might be called higher end or larger companies, and in some cases, businesses that have, they're making profit in Brisbane and employing a few people in Brisbane, but they're not necessarily Brisbane-based, I note that the apartments tab or the apartments option is basically just real estate advertising for all the hotels in the area, and that's really good value for that hotel, but I guess I wonder, are we just handing over a lot of free advertising space to private hotel apartment businesses, so they can suck people into paying too much for a room for a night? Are we getting any value back from other hotels, for example, paying a fee to council in order to advertise on this app? I understand the principle of wanting to support and advertise local small businesses, but this is a, the council's spending millions and millions of dollars designing this app, getting it out there, promoting it so that more people will use the app, and then you've got big hotel chains advertising on the council app for free, so it kind of seems like you're doing the free advertising and promo for those industries, and so again, I'm not saying this is a fundamental flaw with the app as a whole, it comes back to the values and priorities that are embodied in the kind of content that's included on the app, and I would suggest to the council that you're developing something here which is a monetisable resource, and there are going to be some really important questions around how that's used and how this is exploited, I would be very concerned if, for example, the council was proposing to sell data or use the user data for profit in any way, or on sale, or share that even with third parties, there's going to be a lot of slippage where local businesses will say to council, oh, it'd be really great if we could get a copy of all the people who've been looking up cafes in Northgate, for example, and council will want to support that local business and say, oh, well, here's all the people who've logged on to the app who've been looking up that information, here you go, I guess be cautious of that, because I think, I don't think that's what people are signing up for, and that's not, certainly not what I'd like to see this app used for. But similarly, I think if the council is going to be advertising on this app, and it's essentially using public resources to promote private businesses, there needs to be some good processes and thinking around who gets the real estate, for example, I saw, like, there's a list of recommendations from one particular Brisbane musician that's sort of featured on the homepage, that's really great for that musician, but I'm going to have a hundred other musicians asking me, John, why aren't I featured on the homepage of the app? And so, so I'm not trying to be difficult about this, but I'm just highlighting that the council is building a huge platform here, and it seems like the main purpose of the platform is to promote local business, and there are some really, there's a lot of potential for nepotism, there's a lot of potential for favouritism and preferential treatment, depending on how council makes decisions about which businesses, which individuals, which kind of industries do and don't get promoted on here. I'd like, I think there's a lot of value in having an app like this to help connect the city and keep residents up to date about what's going on, but if it's just a platform for businesses to sell their products and encourage more consumption and consumerism, that's not really a good use of resources. There is a real opportunity here, though, to use this as a communication platform, where council can use the homepage of the app to alert people about not just events and shopping opportunities, but important local projects that are coming up in their neighbourhood, or disruptions to, you know, street closures, roadworks, all that sort of stuff, that's the sort of stuff that could be usefully integrated into an app like this, in addition to the maintenance reporting functions I mentioned previously, and the support service portal for people who are in crisis of one form or another. So I think it's a nice start, I do wonder about value for money, like the dollar value is pretty significant, I don't know enough about what the app design market is costing at the moment for stuff like this, but it seems like a lot of money that council has spent on both the design and the advertising, and I would just want to be really sure, are we getting that value for money, noting once again that we're providing a lot of free advertising for some pretty big companies, and in any other context, if, for example, council was selling off space for billboard advertising. And in any other context, if, for example, council was selling off space for billboard advertising, there would be necessarily an expectation of some kind of process where we'd at least have a debate about, you know, who's getting the tender for the advertising billboards, all that sort of stuff. But in this case, council has created a digital space and is giving away free advertising space to commercial entities on a space that's been created at great expense to ratepayers. So you've put ratepayer money into creating an advertising platform for the private sector. And I think there needs to be strong processes embedded in that around who gets that front page, who gets the benefit of all that free marketing, who's shoved down to the bottom of the listings, et cetera. And I don't see enough evidence that council has given enough thought to that element of this. It's an interesting space though.
Thanks, Councilor Sri. Any further speakers? Councilor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item A, the committee presentation of the Brisbane app. Firstly, I'd like to commend the Lord Mayor on the fantastic initiative. It demonstrates that our Shrinna Council not only listens, but we act. As the most small business-friendly council in Australia, this Lord Mayor set up the Economic Recovery Task Force by which, as Councilor Sri, you chair, as Councilor Johnson said before, we actually listen to small businesses and thus the concept for the Brisbane app was born. This investment is ensuring that our local small businesses not only survive this pandemic, but they thrive. And also to address those other concerns that Councilor Johnson, through you chair, addressed whether we should be spending this funding on fixing footpaths or building apps. I think to reference the Lord Mayor last week, he said, "Why can't we do both?" In the famous words of El Paso, "Let's do both", which we do. Thank you for the interjection, Councilor Johnson. The Brisbane app offers residents a better way to discover new destinations, new places, what's on, while also providing business owners a free way to promote their business. As mentioned in the presentation, residents are clearly hungry for things to see and do when they spend an average of 22 minutes exploring the Brisbane app since it launched. There are a number of guides on there, there are 213 guides, sorry, on the app, 8,000 places such as restaurants, pools, parks and hotels, and over 1,700 events listed on the app right now. The guides provide, proving a popular inspiration for people to where to eat, play, shop and visit. With some of the most popular guides being quirky things to do in Brisbane, budget-friendly activities to do with kids and unique date night ideas. I do like that one, that was a really good one. I do have to, I did want to let councillors know that actually on the app itself, you can actually like, on the top right-hand corner, some of you may be able to see, there is an opportunity for you to actually like and share the various business with your friends and family. Over the weekend, I was fortunate to take my kids to Lick Ice Cream at Graceville. And if you haven't tried Lick, you haven't lived. And I was very impressed to walk in and to see the Brisbane app promotion on the counter. And I was talking with the local business owner there who said how great it has been. And thus to date, they've got a couple of, 16 likes on their page already. So it is working for our local small businesses. They do appreciate this investment and I'm so grateful to be part of the Shrinna Council who continue to deliver for small businesses.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the councillors that contributed. Look, one thing we learnt during the COVID and we're still hearing it through the Small Business Roundtable is that smaller, medium-sized enterprises, when they're working hard, they're working bloody hard and their heads are down and their bums are up. And the last thing they're thinking of is how are we then going to get the message out about the business that we have? So that is really where we started with the Brisbane app. It was about supporting those businesses and yes, again, unashamedly, this is advertising for local businesses. Some of the points that Councilor Sri made through you, Mr. Chair, this is early stages. We are two months into this. There is a whole lot of other platforms that we are going to be able to add to this app, but we absolutely made it first and foremost of things to see and do, leading into the Christmas, leading into borders opening, leading into tourists coming back in. I don't agree about the fix-it things. We do have other ways to do that because we don't necessarily want tourists coming in and go, "Oh, gosh, they've got so many things to fix that there's something on an app there." That's not the image that we're trying to put forward. There is ways to definitely do that that's easy. But absolutely, services, different businesses, we're looking at the ways that that would be added and what the buttons would look like and how that would be. People at the moment, 113,000 of them are voted by joining because they want more to see and do. And we need to balance that with what changes we might make on the app as well. But it is about promoting businesses in the lifestyle, leisure, recreation and all about getting people out and about and supporting local businesses. And I hope all councillors here have downloaded it. I like your favourite ice cream stall.
Point of order, Councilor Sri.
Sorry, Chair. Will Councillor Adams take a quick question?
Yes.
Will you take a question?
Yes.
Thanks. Councillor Adams, are you able to track how many people are sort of using the app? Like not just the downloads, but how many people are logging on each day and each week? And will you be able to sort of share that information with the chamber on a regular basis?
I can give you the update today because it was a question that I had on notice for committee today. In the last 28 days, there were 61,707 active app users. So if you look at that across an average day, it's about 2,200 per day. Thinking that probably Monday and Tuesday are a bit quiet, Friday and Saturday are probably a bit busier. But that's as close as we have at the moment. And I can definitely keep the, I imagine it's going to get busier over Christmas for the using. But 61,707, I think I said, for the last 28 days, active users. So people are there and the dwell time is 22 minutes, which if you know anybody in marketing communications, is an astronomical dwell time, 22 minutes on an app. So well done to the team and the work they've done. There's a long way to go and a lot of opportunities with that app and we are standing 150% behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The report before us, the motion before us is the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Game Committee Report. All those in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, the Transport Committee report, please.
I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of November 2021, be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Murphy and seconded by Councillor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 9th of November 2021, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
Mr. Chair, the topic of our Transport Committee presentation was the CityLink Cycleway. The Cycleway has been part of the CBD's transport network for close to a year now. And I'm pleased to say we're tracking a general increase in the number of riders using CityLink to make their way through the city. The Elizabeth Street section has now attracted a total of 145,000 trips since opening with a peak of 1,000 users per day. The Victoria Bridge connection has proven to be even more popular with a total of 155,000 trips since opening, a peak count of 1,500 riders per day. CityLink is also fundamental to supporting safer e-mobility ridership in the CBD. And we've been tracking how many users of the Cycleway on e-mobility devices. We estimate that between 44 and 62% of CityLink users are in fact e-mobility riders. And this is certainly a trend that has been rising. So for all those who thought CityLink Cycleway would be used almost exclusively by those on bikes, you would be wrong. It is being used overwhelmingly by e-mobility riders. This really speaks, I think, to the velocity of e-mobility take-up in Brisbane. Only a few years ago, it was unique or novel to see people using electric personal mobility devices. But now, in 2021, roughly half of the people using our CBD Cycleway are doing so on electric scooters. So what an incredible result there, Chair. In recent weeks, we've also made some adjustments to the trial. This includes improvements like the installation of additional bike racks, new guideposts on Elizabeth Street and e-scooter symbols to complement the bike symbols that are already there. A more significant adjustment has included some work that's being completed ahead of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge construction. A temporary signalized crossing is being implemented at the intersection of Edward and Alice Street, which is a new crossing into the Botanic Gardens. With this change, it also makes sense for the Cycleway to be switched from the western side of Edward Street between Margaret and Alice Streets. This actually provides better connectivity for riders as it takes out the two-stage awkward crossing of the Margaret Street intersection, which had come through in our survey results thus far and had been something that users of CityLink Cycleway had given us a lot of feedback on. This work is now underway, commenced in mid-October and it should be finished within two months in time for the handover of the site to Bessex Wattpad to commence construction of the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge. We trust that this will make users ride along Edward Street even smoother once it's complete. Now, the trial still has around four months to go and it's due to wrap up in March next year. We've received so far 770 survey responses and the feedback has generally recognized the safer environment that CityLink Cycleway has provided for riders and in particular for e-mobility users. We've also seen just general satisfaction with the design of the Cycleway. Of course, the more feedback, the better and we hope to have even more responses, Chair, prior to March 2022, at which point the trial will be evaluated. Last week, Chair Councillor Cassidy asked a question in committee about the growth that we've seen in ridership on Victoria Bridge since the CityLink Cycleway started. He asked that in the committee meeting and I endeavoured to get back to him in the council chamber. I neglected to do so, so apologies to Councillor Cassidy for that. I'm pleased to be able to say that on the 15th of October 2019, we had 818 bikes and e-mobility devices cross the Victoria Bridge, whether that was on the shared path or on road. And this time last month, so on the 15th of October 2021, we had 1,180 riders using CityLink across Victoria Bridge, which represents an 88, sorry, a 44% increase in the trip numbers as a result of CityLink Cycleway. So even comparing those that were using it before to those today, we've had a very significant increase. Mr. Chair, I'd also like to acknowledge another significant milestone has been achieved on the Brisbane Metro project. Infrastructure works for Metro started in the CBD in September and last week, piling for the new tunnel under Adelaide Street kicked off. The drill rig that we've got there is 26 metres tall, it weighs as much as a Boeing 747 and it's the first of its kind in Australia, so it truly is an engineering feat for Brisbane. The rig arrived on-site about a fortnight ago and last week started drilling the first of 169 vertical piles required for the tunnel portal. The rig will drive canopy tubes horizontally into the earth to protect the tunnel, which will then be backfilled with concrete to support the tunnel roof. The piles will range from five to 13 metres deep and will be the first step before tunneling of the 200-metre-long tunnel begins. As I've mentioned before, in order to massively reduce impacts on the surface, a mine tunneling solution will be used instead of a cut-and-cover approach. We're very proud that 115 local workers will build our Adelaide Street Tunnel with Metro supporting over 2,600 jobs throughout the life of the project. And as the Lord Mayor has described, building this tunnel is effectively a triple bypass for the city's bus network. It will decongest the busways, it will free up bottlenecks and it will allow our metro trackless trams and our buses to travel underneath the road through the tunnel to King George Square, adding significant capacity to the network overall. We acknowledge the impacts that come with construction works of this scope and we thank nearby businesses and stakeholders for their patience while we complete this essential work for Brisbane. I also want to acknowledge, Chair, the return to normal for our bus network. Last Friday, we reverted to all-door boarding. We opened up the front seats, which had been closed since the start of the pandemic and we removed mandatory mask-wearing for our drivers. We will however be retaining cashless and contactless payments for the time being. My hope, of course, is that this will become a permanent feature, but that, of course, will be a discussion that we will have with our colleagues at Translink as the network operator. I've been engaging constantly with our bus drivers since the start of the pandemic and rightly or wrongly, many of the public health order rules caused significant disturbance and annoyance to our staff. I can assure you that our drivers overwhelmingly love the interactions that they have with our customers, the travelling public here in Brisbane. They have been patient, they have obeyed the rules and they'll now be thankful that some of the freedoms that I enjoyed at work prior to the pandemic and prior to social distancing have been returned to them. I want to extend my gratitude to all of our drivers for the work that they have been doing during the pandemic and acknowledge their swift and professional implementation of these changes in the last 72 hours. We will, of course, continue to apply and implement public health orders as and when the practical implementation of those guidelines are made clear to us as we have done throughout COVID-19. Finally, Chair, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Ms. Marie Gales, who finished up with council as Branch Manager of Transport Planning and Operations last Friday. This is after a career in council spanning almost six years. Marie, as many councillors will know, has almost 30 years' experience as an engineer and a planner in the transport environment, mostly within local government and consultancy in Australia and the United Kingdom. She's a Fellow of the Registered Professional Engineers Association of Queensland, RPEQ, a chartered engineer with Engineers Australia and a Fellow of the Institute of Civil Engineers. She's also been elected Deputy President of the Engineers Australia Queensland Committee. It is safe to say, Chair, that Marie was a trailblazer for women in engineering and continue to be. Recently, Marie was also the winner of the 2021 Winner of the John Holland Crystal Vision Award for advancing the interests of women in the construction industry. She was the Institute of Public Works Engineering Australasia IPWAC's Engineer of the Year in 2019. She's worked on a number of projects for the city, including the Transport Plan for Brisbane, the 2018 Commonwealth Games, the Victoria Bridge closure, CityLink Cycleway, the Traffic Management Centre and the creation actually of Transport Planning and Operations. She, always in my time dealing with her, was a hands-on engineer that supported and enabled growth within her team and her staff. And I'd like to just take this opportunity on behalf of the Transport Committee to thank her for her service to Brisbane City Council. I know that she'll be missed by many and we wish her well on the next chapter of her career and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. Further debate? Councillor Sri.
Thanks, Chair. My new working theory is that the high-pitched buzzing is only audible to people under 35. It's really, you can get, Councillor Cassidy can hear it, Councillor Cook and Councillor Griffiths can't. It's really, really getting to me anyway. I'll probably leave the chamber soon if it doesn't stop. Yeah, it's fricking awful.
Move on, Councillor Sri.
I thought I'd lost my hearing from all the punkings, but evidently not. Just rising to speak on the, yeah, the report and really kind of feeling torn because on the one hand, it might be strategic to heap praise on the administration and tell them that the CityLink BikeWay is really, really good, but I don't want them to form the mistaken impression that I think they've done enough. Because the CityLink BikeWay, it's a really good project. It's the sort of thing we need to see a lot more of in this city. I'm really excited that the council administration has done it. Like, it's great, I've ridden on it, I feel so much safer. I think it's good for pedestrians as well because it gets the e-scooters and the bikes off the footpaths. And the design or the kind of physical infrastructure that's gone in seems to be relatively cost-effective compared to some of the other bikeway projects the council's done in the past. On the other hand though, it's not a full bike grid for the CBD. It's only kind of, I guess you'd say maybe a third of a proper grid. And I think there's still a lot, lot more that needs to be done, particularly in the inner city to make cycling and riding safe. And I was quite disappointed when I heard that the Cycleway would be a 12-month trial and that council wouldn't start any further works on similar projects until after the trial was concluded. I'd like to suggest to the administration that the trial has been a success and that it would be okay to start other similar trials in other locations, even as you wait for this 12-month period to conclude. There's a lot of opportunities, particularly around South Brisbane, but other parts of the CBD as well, where we could start taking a similar approach of repurposing a little bit of street parking with some drop-in barriers or curbing or whatever you want to call it, at relatively low cost. Start to trial some other bike lanes and see how they go. We don't have to wait for the CityLink Cycleway trial to finish before we start planning some of those other projects. In terms of my ward, Vulture Street really springs to mind as one of the obvious opportunities, noting that there's already been a lot of community consultation and that there's a lot of really strong support for the Vulture Street bike lane. And I'd really like to see the CityLink Cycleway, I guess you'd say, construction methodology or that approach to creating bike lanes trialled in other spaces. We, you know, in the council election, I put it top of my flyers, "We want to take away half the street parking along Vulture Street and put in bike lanes." And some people might have thought that'd be controversial, but we got a big swing in votes and like we were obviously quite popular in terms of the platform we took to the electorate. So I'd suggest that there's a big appetite for more bike lanes around the inner city and we should take confidence from the CityLink Cycleway trial and say, "Well, why not do a little bit more of that sort of stuff?" But yeah, having said all that, I still think this administration has a really long way to go. Brisbane is still lagging behind most other developed cities now in terms of the quality and the amount of separated safe cycling infrastructure that we're providing in the city. There's still some pretty big gaps in the network. And I do want to really ensure that the administration doesn't rest on its laurels and say, "Well, we're doing some bridges, we've done the CityLink, job done, we can move on from cycling to something else now." There's still a real problem in this city. It's still really unsafe for people to ride on most Brisbane. on most Brisbane roads, and while this project is a good start, it doesn't fix that broader problem by itself. I did also just want to reiterate for the chamber, this was discussed briefly in the Transport Committee meeting the other day, but I think because it's sort of two different projects, it was hard to get a clear answer. The intersection of Alice Street and Edward Street, I guess it's the southeast corner of the cycling grid, is going to be a tricky space over the coming years, and we're near the entrance to the Botanic Gardens. And I do worry that with the Kangaroo Point Bridge construction starting, that that's going to be a little bit of a danger spot for cyclists. I think the council is right to be shifting the lanes over to the other side of the road. But I also want to see the council think seriously about the ramifications of trying to bring more delivery vehicles, et cetera, into that space once the bridge is completed, if indeed there's a commercial use on top of the bridge. We've seen with other precincts like Howard Smith Wharves, that if you have a busy cycling corridor or a busy cycling area, and then a restaurant or a series of restaurants and bars is introduced to the precinct, they need a lot of delivery vehicles to service them. And while people always seem to underestimate the traffic impacts of those delivery vehicles, we've learnt from experience now with places like Howard Smith Wharves, that that can materially impact safety and accessibility for active transport, and particularly cycling. And so if we're thinking about the future of the Citylink Cycleway, we need to recognise that if there is a commercial use included as part of the Kangaroo Point Bridge, and there isn't good thinking and a clear plan of how vehicles might access that facility or how, yeah, stock deliveries will actually happen and where trucks will pull up and where they're going to park, I'm very worried that trucks are going to be tempted to park in the bike lane or to be ducking across the path of cyclists to find somewhere to pull over so they can service that commercial facility. So I hope councillor Murphy, it's kind of convenient that he's sort of overseen both of these projects, but I do hope that we don't lose sight of that, because I frankly don't trust the standard engineering assessment processes, because they do seem to underestimate the impacts caused by delivery vehicles and how dangerous it can be for cyclists when a truck driver doesn't have a designated loading zone, they've been told they have to deliver something to a certain business, they don't know exactly where to pull up, so they end up just pulling up in somewhere in front of the bike lane that endangers bike lane users. So let's make sure that that doesn't happen as part of the construction of the Kangaroo Point Bridge and its future interactions with the Citylink cycle network. Thank you.
Motion before us is the Transport Committee report. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 9th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you, it's been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Matic that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday 9 November 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate, councillor Wines?
Thank you, Mr Chair. The Infrastructure Committee saw a presentation last week on the works at Cutter's Landing, both the boardwalk renovation and the revetment works. As some councillors may recall, the revetment, excuse me, is the part of the river wall that we're working to maintain through a series of rocks and submarine netting and a whole range of sort of gabion baskets to hold the embankment in place. And there was also work done on the boardwalk itself. Councillors should recall that the boardwalk is made of a series of panels and headstocks, and then items that hold the headstock in place. There are a number of issues with that. The committee presentation saw a demonstration of the spalling of the concrete from the steel reinforcements, which is structurally sound but losing condition, that's one of the reasons we're required to do this work. The concrete headstocks were showing some signs of corrosion and internal reinforcement as well and cracking, which is, again, one of the reasons why we're doing this work. This work is preventative and ongoing, and works in this area will be ongoing for many years to ensure that what is an exceptionally popular asset in, not only New Farm, but as I've often said, this particular river walk is not just, not merely for New Farm-Tenerife, but something that's enjoyed by residents from all over the city. We are doing work to ensure that it's there and available for the city for many years to come, and we are sure that these works will add some decades to its life. There are four petitions under consideration that were passed by the committee, and any comments from councillors that they are relevant to are welcome.
Thank you. Further debate, councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, actually, just a request to move item B, just as seriateum for voting.
D?
B.
B, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all? No further debate?
I suppose I will probably identify for the councillors who aren't aware what item B reflects, it's a request for further pedestrian enhancements along Shan Street. Shan Street is a road that links Stafford to Ingra, it's in the McDowell Ward, if memory serves that correctly, it's in McDowell Ward. There are pedestrian crossings, pedestrian, excuse me, protected pedestrian items, prefat concrete refuges, at least two, one at She Street and one at Brendan Street there, to protect crossings at the moment. Also, as I say, this piece of road connects down into My Ward, in the section that is much closer to My Ward, I've recently arranged for an underpass to be built so that a person can cross into those parks without actually having to cross over the roads, that is only a small distance away, so that is there as well. So we are working on this area to make sure that we make it safer for pedestrians to cross Shan Street and make it a family place available to all for both cyclists and pedestrians to access all parts of that area.
Thank you. The motion before us is the Infrastructure Committee report, moving items A, C, D and E. All in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We're now moving item B. Item B, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division's been called by councillor Cumming and councillor Cassidy. Please, clerks ring the bells. Thank you, councillors. The division is over, item B in the Infrastructure Committee report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Thank you, any abstentions? You were a no? Okay. Okay, clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour, five against and two abstentions.
Thank you, declare that carried, thank you. Councillors, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday 9th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 9 November 2021 be adopted. Councillor Allen, any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week, the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee received a presentation on the recently completed Manly Harbour Village Precinct project down in councillor Cummings Ward. The suburban hubs like Manly Harbour Village are the beating hearts of our city's neighbourhoods and offer a very different experience to visiting a major shopping centre. This project is just one of 10 village precinct projects the Shrima Council is delivering as part of our $11 million investment into revitalising local shopping strips across Brisbane. We know just how important places like this are to the community, and these sorts of streetscape improvements do wonders in attracting new customers to the area. It's more than just a facelift, it's about encouraging residents to shop locally and support their local businesses. The Manly community were very supportive and were also very involved in this project and in the revitalisation of the village. Certainly, there was feedback that the Fourshore Plaza needed a bit more greenery and more seating so that people could take in the views across the Manly Harbour and obviously the marina there. In the context of this particular project, we've added new street furniture, bike racks and creative lighting artworks to help activate this space for both day and night use. Manly Village is always bustling, particularly on the weekends with regular markets and events held in this plaza area. The space was quite constrained with narrow footpath areas and cluttered with different furniture. The new plaza focuses on creating a usable and open space with new infrastructure to support events and activities, and plenty of room for pedestrians and bikes to pass through and for people to gather and enjoy the scenery. Local Kwanzaa mooka artist Dalveen Cockatoo Collins was engaged to create the project with the projection artworks, which embraced Manly as a seaside destination and tells the story of Manly through light displays. And I must say, the way they've approached this projection is really quite unique, and I must get down there at night to see it myself, and certainly it's been a quite clever and innovative use of projection. Unfortunately, the launch event was cancelled due to wet weather, but we will look to reschedule this as soon as possible. In other areas of the city, projects to improve local strips are going to occur in Ash Grove West, Paddington Terraces, Martha Street in Camp Hill and Cooperoo Junction. We've just launched the village precinct projects for Minya Street in Mansfield, and Sandgate Road, Boondle and Park Road, Milton will commence shortly. It's all part of the Shrima Council's plan to make Brisbane suburbs even better with more to see and do. In addition to the presentation, we had a petition requesting the council overturn the development approval for 49 to 51 Gresham Street East Brisbane. The application was approved on the 28th of April 2021. The appeal was lodged on the 28th of May 21, so the matter is currently before the courts, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thanks councillor, further debate, councillor Cumming.
Thank you. Yes, the new upgrade in Manly is very much appreciated by the local business community. I've always worked very closely with the Chamber of Commerce in Manly. They're, in fact, I think, the only commercial area in the whole of Brisbane now that pays a levy each year to raise funds for the Chamber of Commerce, which then spends, they provide movies in the park, I don't have to worry about that, they do that on a regular basis. And they've also run events like the Sunday Markets, which are very popular, run every week. And in addition, they have a Halloween, their Halloween in Manly is the biggest in Brisbane, I believe, by some distance. Unfortunately, it hasn't been held the last two years because of COVID things, and I'm hoping that they'll get back and run it again next year, because it's a big drawcard for the area. The Manly area is an area now of bars and restaurants, it's very heavily tenanted, very few vacancies. There's a new four-storey unit development about to start in the area. There's been a change in the hands of the Manly Hotel, which was in the McDonald family for some 51 years, where they always less ease of the property, but 51 years is a long time for a family to run a pub, but now one of the big commercial groups has taken over and endeavour. But we're waiting to see what they'll do too, because they promised a big upgrade of the pub as well. So this will add to the attraction of Manly, it'll add to the large number of people that come to Manly, to Cambridge Parade, Manly, for the restaurants and the bars, and also there's some down on the jetty at Manly as well, the Tide Bar, and also we've got an excellent seafood restaurant at Trevelga Street at Manly as well, but within walking distance of Cambridge Parade. So Manly's going really well, and this will mean it goes even better. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Cumming. Any further speakers? Councillor Sree.
Just really briefly on the Gresham Street petition, wanted to put on the record that we were quite concerned about this development application, I don't think council should have approved it, and it sort of embodies a lot of the concerns we consistently see with developments in this city where stuff doesn't comply with the neighbourhood plan, residents feel left out and have no meaningful say over the changes in their neighbourhood, and as a result, they end up having to take council to court, and I think that's pretty disappointing. The council should have paid a lot more attention to the submissions of residents and not approved this one in the first place.
Thanks councillor Sree. Further speakers?
Sorry, Mr Chair, I meant to move that item, ask that item B be dealt with seriateum for voting purposes. My apologies.
Out of sequence, but I'll take it. Okay, item B, seriateum for voting. Okay, further debate, councillor Allen. Okay, thank you, we now move the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, item A, item A only. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Item B, item B, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cook and councillor Cumming. Please ring the bells. Councillors, the division is on, item B, in the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
No abstentions, no abstentions. Clerk?
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and seven against.
Declare that motion carried, thank you. Councillors, the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee report, please. Councillor Davis.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday 9th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Davis, seconded by councillor Mackay, that the report of the Environment Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday 9 November 2021 be adopted. Councillor Davis, any debate?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move to the committee report, I'd like to address councillor Johnston's question regarding a jacaranda tree on Sheffield Street, Oxley. Mr Chair, the Lord Mayor has requested council to undertake an urgent inspection and assessment of the tree. Mr Chair, on Tuesday, we had a presentation on lookout upgrades that have happened here in Brisbane. The Shrima Council is committed to creating more to see and do in our city by improving access to some of Brisbane's hidden gems. As part of the 2020 election, this administration committed to delivering upgrades at Ealdon Hill Reserve, Stevens Mountain at Capera. Ealdon Hill Reserve on the boundary of Windsor and Wilston is a working reservoir managed by Urban Utilities. The top of the reservoir provides spectacular views to Brisbane City and has often been used as a place for watching river fire, as well as frequented by residents for relaxation and exercise. The stage one upgrades, which were completed recently, included upgraded walking trails, construction of steps and new viewing platform, while stage two works will create a new loop track and resurfacing works. Stevens Mountain Reserve above the former Eckeburn Quarry offers views over Mount Cootha and Brisbane's west. Stage one of the upgrades have seen the formalisation of walking tracks, viewing platforms to Mount Cootha and improved entry signage. Capera Bushland Reserve links to Ingra Military Reserve and Diaghla National Park. Most of this land was recently acquired by council with limited recreational opportunities for visitors of the park. Upgrades to the site have included the construction of footpaths and natural Upgrades to the site have included the construction of footpaths and a natural health platform with seating, asphalting sections of road to improve pedestrian access. In addition to the sites this administration promised last year, we have also delivered upgrade to Mount Gravout Lookout, Chirmside and Milne Hill Reserve. Upgrades to Mount Gravout Lookout have seen upgrades to walking trails, improving the entry to the reserve and enhancing the picnic area and car spaces around Gertrude Petty Place. We've also completed improvements to Chirmside Hills Reserve and Milne Hill Reserve. Upgrades to Chirmside Hills Reserve include enhancements to the picnic area with installation of an improved shelter, a new path fencing and new seating. While at Milne Hill Reserve, it includes a new lookout platform and an upgraded path with steps, and it's fantastic, and I recommend that you come along and have a look at Milne Hill Lookout. Item B was three petitions objecting to a proposed dog-off-leash area in James Warner Park at Kangaroo Point. Councillor Sri is currently delivering the dog-off-leash area as part of his cert bourbon enhancement fund, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thanks, councillor Davis. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I'll speak on item A, the lookout upgrades that were in the presentation last week. I note with great interest that there are six lookouts that are being upgraded around Brisbane this year, all of which are in LMP wards, all of them. That is of great concern to me, four of them on the north side and two on the south side as well. So, you know, it's quite interesting to me that the LMP, this administration, has just stopped governing for the whole of the city, and they're only governing for themselves. So for councillor Tracy Davis's information, Mr Chairman, here's one she's missed. The Francis Lookout. It would be one of Brisbane's oldest lookouts. It was established in 1862 as the burial place for some settlers who came into the Corinda area and established their family and their farm. The Francis family, after whom the lookout is named for, were the doers of their day. Angela Francis, who established this plot after losing multiple children in childbirth, established a nursing service to assist rural and regional women in Queensland because of her own family losses. And it's some of her children that are buried on the hill, along with other Francis family descendants. Now, the lookout is one hectare, it's high on the hill at Corinda on the border of Sherwood. And about 18 months ago, I met with the Friends Of Group there, and we had a really good discussion about what needed to be done to look after the area. And from that, I logged a number of jobs with council. You know, nothing too radical, like, you know, painting, fixing some drainage problems, fixing the fence that's broken, you know, you know.
Basic.
Basic, I don't know, and more important things like making sure that the gravestones that have toppled over are properly looked after. So council, like all heritage-listed parks in my area, then decided that it was all too hard, that there had to be a conservation management plan done to maintain the park, because there wasn't any maintenance happening, that there had to be a conservation management plan undertaken. That's well over a year ago. Now, I've repeatedly followed up with the team at News, and I've had no responses to my multiple emails. I've now done, you know, written on the piece of paper to the CEO to say, what's going on? The manager of this area, who I hope she's listening up there, sat in my office with the head of our parks team and said, this'll take three months, Nicole. Well, over a year later, the gravestones are still falling over, the fence is still unpainted, the shingles on the Lynch Gate are, you know, not in good shape. I've gone ahead and done the interpretive signage project that I could do with the community. But it just strikes me that this is a heritage-listed park, one of the oldest in Brisbane. Now, if councillor Davis can stand up and say to me, you know, to be up there with Victoria Park, 1862, and this park in the 1920s was given in trust to council to maintain, and council's not done very much about that. So I'm pretty disgusted that councillor Davis is out there promoting all these wonderful upgrades done in LMP areas, and I'm sure this is news to her today. But perhaps she could have a little look into why the Francis Lookout at Corinda has been neglected, why more than a year later, my repeated requests, repeated requests to undertake some basic maintenance work in this park are not being undertaken. The gravestones of these families who handed over this land to council should not be falling down. The fence shouldn't be falling down. And council needs to get on and do its job, not just in the LMP's areas, it needs to do them in all of Brisbane, including in Tennyson Wood.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Mr Chair, for your role to contribute to this and speak about what a wonderful programme this is. The Alden Hill Project was the first one mentioned today and the first one, I understand, mentioned in last week's presentation. It is a old reservoir that people claim that Bert Hinkler flew over it and said, gee, that looks like the Alden Hills of Scotland, and that's where it gets its name. That is, I am confident, an apocryphal story, it is unlikely to be true, but that is the local, that is the local story, local legend, that that is what happened. The works have been tremendous. Now, the reservoir there has often been a local walking space for people to, people to run up, people to walk their dogs, it's well-known and well-used to those people who live nearby. Occasionally antisocial things have happened there in the past, but it's comparatively rare, and it is a wonderful and well-loved location. Council through, and I can see it's supported by the state government, has been able to do a great deal of work and really lift this location. And can I commend the team, the two lookouts that were created are excellent, but they do pale in comparison to the walking trails that were created around the hill, which allow 360 views of the community, particularly to the north. There is a whole range of works that went into that. There were also engineering challenges, and I have to recognise the efforts of the team for their engineering challenges, how they addressed that. Because it is a hill built around a reservoir rather than a reservoir built in a hill, there are engineering challenges that come with that, and they were handled very, very well. This has been really, really well received by the local community. It is a part of the more to see and do in your local community programme, which has made these little local gems just sparkle that little bit more.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Any further debate? No further debate. Councillor Davis.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd just like to thank the councillors that contributed to the debate. And once again, can I put on record the great outcomes that the officers have achieved in the lookout upgrades? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, the motion before us is the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th November 2021. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, the City Standard Committee report, please. Councillor Marks.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th November 2021 be adopted. Councillor Marks, any debate?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Before I get to the report, I just want to mention an event that I went to last week. The Lord Mayor mentioned Robert as our longest-serving staff member. So last week, I was pleased to attend the celebrations for some of our other longer-serving members of BCC. We celebrated 10, 15, 25 and 30 year with Brisbane City Council. Those of us on the south side will know Adrian, who I was privileged enough to present his 25 years to last week. And also, just to clarify, a park upgrade that was mentioned in the chambers earlier today was built by Urban Play, who are based in Albion. The committee presentation last week was on the construction community notifications, a process where workers have been, officers have been working on for a little while. And then there was also some petitions. I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Further debate? Councillor Cumming.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, in relation to the report, I'd ask that item B be dealt with cereatum for voting purposes.
Item B?
Yes, B, yep.
Okay.
This petition relates to the Criterium at Nunda. And it was lodged with council on the 21st of March, so which is some eight months ago. There were 742 signatures. And to summarise the petition, it resonates through the attention of council the poor state of the repairs that have been recently done to the surface of the Nunda Criterium cycle racing circuit at Headley Avenue, Nunda. Cyclists appreciate that council's recent repairs attract service. Unfortunately, some of the repairs are of poor quality. They're now very rough sections of bitumen that are much worse than before the repairs were done. The track is regularly used by three large cycle racing clubs and the National Aus Cycling Association to conduct races. It is not uncommon for a cyclist to reach 70 kilometres per hour during races at the circuit. The sections of rough surface are a real hazard. Training by large numbers of race cyclists, triathletes and inline skaters are done on a daily basis. A typical Saturday morning racing can attract over between 200 and 300 riders. Regional elite and even international riders from all over South East Queensland often race at this circuit. The ineffective repairs are both an embarrassment to the council and to the clubs that organise the racing there. So that was what the petition has said. And it's obviously a very popular facility and large numbers of people using it. However, the ineffective repairs to surface meant that the circuit was useless for inline skaters who used to regularly train on the track. So tough luck for the poor old inline skaters from the LMP. The rough sections made it difficult for cyclists to ride over them at a speed on a road bike, but that was what the circuit was originally built for. The rough section I referred to earlier, 50 metres before the finish line, is extremely hazardous because that's when riders are racing for the finish. And an A-grade rider would regularly hit about 70 kilometres per hour at this section. So the chances of severe injuries if they manage to lose control of their bike and crash into someone else or go over the handlebars is really pretty chronic there. If council has the expertise to carry out proper repose to roads, sorry, why is this facility a problem? Especially if the heaviest vehicle, which would traverse the circuit, is a cyclist on a bike, you know. So, you know, we have City Standards boasting about how good they are at doing repairs, et cetera, and this is the best they can do in this regard. If Brisbane's to be an Olympic city, surely the council should be supporting sports that will feature in 2032. The Criterium circuit has the potential to breed up and coming athletes for the Olympic Games, but the ineffective repairs are hampering training and racing for athletes. The council works were performed in early December last year. Council officers knew the repairs were substandard then, and the petition was presented in March. So why aren't funds allocated for the repair in the 2021 council budget? It's being put on the back burner. It's not good enough.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. I will rise to talk on item B. The challenge with this particular Criterium and the location of some of these repairs, it's worth bearing in mind the Criterium borders Kedron Brook, and it's traversed by a creek. And so what's happened in this location is that below the Criterium surface, it gets very damp very, very quickly. And when the trucks came in to do the work, they found it quite difficult to undertake it because of the subsidence and softness of the grounds underneath the Criterium. So they recognised this, they completed the work. I've been down to have a look at it, and certainly it is something that could be better. They have undertaken to try and identify a methodology that will allow them to make some repairs in this location, but that's the big challenge. The ground is very, very soft, it makes it difficult to get equipment in there and to get the outcome that they want. We are aware that we need to try and find up a solution to that, and council officers are working on it, and I'll leave a further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor. Any further debate? Councillor Marks, summing up.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'd just rise to thank councillor Allen for his contribution to the debate on this particular petition. As always, we hear the truth of the matter, and I'm glad he's got that on the record. I'd just suggest through you, Mr Chair, that if the member for the opposition wants us to close the bike track while the work has been undertaken, I'm happy to take his advice on board. Thank you.
Thank you. The item before us is the City Standards report, item B. So we're moving item A, C, D and D. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We now move item B. All in favour of item B, please say aye. And, oh, sorry, just say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
We have a division, but councillor Cumming and councillor Strug, please ring the bells.
We both got glasses. This is the Criterium, dangerous Criterium. No, no, this is the Criterium. The waste behind the shops is gone. This is big. And bike riders. It's potentially dangerous, Nicole, who knows?
Thank you, councillors. The division is on item B in the City Standards report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands.
No.
Any abstentions? Clarks.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour, five against and two abstentions.
Thank you. Declare that carried. Councillors, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, please. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 9th of November 2021 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 9th November 2021 be adopted. Is there any debate? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before moving to the report, I also would like to add my congratulations to Rob Novkki for his wonderful 54 years of service to Brisbane City Council and to wish him every best wishes for his retirement. I'd also like to let people know all about the wonderful things that we can see and do in our fantastic city of Brisbane, and to mention some of the amazing community organisations and some of the activities that have happened in the last week. So on Sunday, I was privileged to attend the Trans Community Awards at the Wickham, where many genders won voice for the sixth year in a row. And I'm very proud to say that I have supported it through the Lord Mayor's community funding for our transgender diverse and non-binary communities to host a community awards evening. And every year, it just grows, and it's fantastic to see the community come together and to congratulate those winners of those awards because they're very special to each and every one of them. Also, on Sunday, the Lions Club will be celebrating 75 years next year. And to celebrate, the Tenerife Lions have planted a garden at the Tenerife Broadbook with an unveiling of a plaque, and I was joined by the federal member Trevor Evans for what was a fantastic afternoon, with a lot of our Lions people then heading off to the Spring Sounds at Sunset, which was curated by the Brisbane Powerhouse, and a performance on the lawn. And it was just amazing to see so many people. It's a little difficult.
Councillors, can we take the conversations outside, please?
You should be listening to the wonderful things that I'm telling you about that's been happening in our beautiful ward. I might even mention the Wyndham Fringe Festival if you're lucky. Can I just say that the Spring Sounds at Sunset was fantastic? It was over three nights. As I said, the Brisbane Powerhouse brought it all together, and it was performed, unfortunately, the Friday night was. the Friday night, there was a fair bit of rain, and so that had to be taken inside. But Saturday and Sunday, the local residents were able to be out and about and sitting in the beautiful, near the New Farm Park, Powerhouse Park there, and wonderful entertainment and truly just the most beautiful afternoon. I'd also like to mention that I attended the E-Scooter Community Day through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Murphy, and this was a group of E-Scooter community people who are absolutely thrilled at some of the things that council is putting together and very much looking forward to meeting with Mr Bailey further next week. But again, held in New Farm Park and a great opportunity for the community to come together, and of course, on Saturday night, I was able to go along to see Sometimes It's Hot Like the Sun, which was produced by Imperfect Creatives, and I'd like to particularly thank Zed Hopkins and Karina White, who directed this contemporary piece. And it was held in Fortitude Valley, of course, and was fantastic to see, again, wonderful emerging artists be able to perform once again in the valley. And a couple of other festivals that I'd just like to mention, the Chatty Bench Festival, I think councillor Matic maybe have gone along to that at Calvin Grove Village, again, something that was brought together by the community, and I'd like to, through you, Mr Chair, to thank councillor Marks and her team for working with the community to put together, to paint some benches that then allowed people to tell their stories about why Calvin Grove is such a fantastic place to live. And we also had the Sunpak Summer Fest, so lots happening in Brisbane. Sunpak Summer Fest was on Friday and Saturday night, and I'm sure that councillor Mark and, I think councillor Wong was probably there, but I was along on the Friday night for our Queensland Youth Orchestra to play, and again, it was fantastic. And of course, we should all note that it was Remembrance Day on the 11th of November, and I attended at the Submariners Memorial there at Tenerife, and I know that we had a fantastic event in King George Square. And finally, may I say that we had Mama Mia performed by the Queensland Musical Theatre at Twelfth Night Theatre. And the Queensland Musical Theatre, I'm very proud to be their patron, but it is a community theatre, and can I say that with Mama Mia, we had everyone singing in the aisles, and so it was absolutely fantastic. And on that note, that's the end of my report of all the fantastic, wonderful things that are happening around Brisbane in terms of our nighttime economy and in terms of more to see and do. Moving to the report. Last week, we had a committee presentation which updated us on our community halls' online customer initiatives, and it was presented by Mark Deitch, and I want to thank Mark because I think we all found it incredibly impressive. And as you are all aware, our council's community facilities team offer a range of affordable, hireable facilities and are launching virtual tours and online bookings as two new customer initiatives. So we were shown the service offerings available through these virtual tours, which allow visitors to view the facilities in a number of ways. We've also written to the councillors who have those tours occurring in their wards to get some feedback so that we can make sure that as we progress to the other, to the other centres, that we can make the most of that. So, so far, the feedback on these virtual tours has been highly positive, and the users have supported not requiring an onsite viewing prior to making a booking. It's reduced the follow-up queries in relation to booking information, and it's also reduced our customer and staff administration challenges from generating invoices. So a fantastic presentation, really want to thank Mark and his team for putting that together. And of course, we also had five petitions that were before the committee last week in regard to the Inogra Creek Draft Sports and Recreation Precinct.
Councillor Howard. Councillors, conversations, please, outside or not at all. Councillor Howard.
So the five petitions that our committee received last week in relation to the Inogra Creek Draft Precinct Sports Plan, as you know, Brisbane City Council in partnership with the Australian Government has drafted the Inogra Creek Sport and Recreation Precinct Plan, and we're currently back out for further consultation, but the response to those five petitions was put before the committee last week, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Howard. Any further debate or discussion? Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak about these petitions and just ask that they all be taken, cereumatum, so that's petition, that's item B, C, D, E and F, taken, cereumatum for voting.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Just for those who aren't aware, this has been a very contentious issue out at Inogra, with thousands of people getting involved with council's plans out there, and thousands of people objecting through these petitions to the plans that this LMP council has come up with. And it's disappointing to see so many people so upset about a council initiative that was going to deliver so much for their community. Something has gone wrong here and significantly wrong. In fact, I don't even think these petitions should be before us today if this administration was listening. The idea is that you work with the community instead of acting against them, and it's certainly the feeling of residents that I've met from Inogra and surrounding suburbs is that this council has actively worked against them, not listened to them and not listened to the local clubs out there. I believe, and we believe, this project has been poorly handled from its inception, and we're disappointed that the LMP councillor, Andrew Weins, has not had more involvement in this and has been backed from it. Really, if you were involved with your local community, you would be listening and hearing them, and you would know that this isn't working. Usually, well, my understanding, local government is that we should be working with the community, not against them, and that we should be taking the information that they give us and actually delivering what they want. Unfortunately, this council was shamed into consultation. They were shamed into having to actually go out and listen to residents at a public meeting. And I know that councillor Cassidy spoke at that meeting and was very clear that it was this administration who weren't listening to the residents of Brisbane. We're not just seeing it with this issue, we're seeing it with the East Brisbane Bowls Club. I've seen it with the neighbourhood plan out at Maruka, Salisbury and Nathan, and we, and surprisingly, or most disappointingly, even now with our local parks projects, we're being told by council officers that under this administration, you actually can't consult with residents anymore about what's going into their parks. It is, it is disappointing that this administration is not listening. It is more disappointing that this administration thinks it knows best and wants to tell residents what they should be thinking. So we believe that this plan should be totally scrapped and started again from scratch. Residents of Brisbane, residents of Inogra deserve so much better than what this administration is delivering.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Weins.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak through items B through F, and I just want to go on from some earlier comments about the Inogra Creek Sport and Rec Plan. So historically, the Inogra Creek Sport and Rec Facility is one of the premier women's facilities not only in Brisbane, but arguably Australia. It caters to more than 21, at least 21 different sporting clubs and associations. It is a key and vital part of the community throughout our district. Making sure that it has the best possible facilities is, of course, one of the objectives of both myself and this council. That being said, when you have a facility like that abutting residents in a suburban area, there are issues that it will generate that will affect those residents. Council, I, and I know that previous councillors for the areas, for example councillor Howard who represented the area before me through a redistribution, experienced a great deal of complaints about the nature of on-street parking that was generated from those sporting associations. And we had had a long-running request for a artificial turf wicket, artificial turf pitch for the Brisbane Women's Hockey Association. The Brisbane Women's Hockey Association insisted that if they did not have an artificial pitch, they would become uncompetitive over time and people would leave them for other competitions. With these two challenges, we pursued an outcome to try and address these issues. The issues around the artificial turf, whether they be drainage, whether they be some sort of soil contamination issues, whether they be the, a potential concrete bund wall which was proposed by the association at one point, they all had a whole range of issues. Council has offered to intervene, and our commitment in most recent elections was to build this facility for the association with corresponding car parks to address the car parking issues which affect both Downey Park Netball Association, Brisbane Women's Hockey Association, Brisbane Softball, and a number of other groups who work through there, to make sure that the effect, that there was ease of use for those people, but also importantly that local residents were able to, able to access their streets both on Saturdays and yes, also through the week. Now, we put a proposal, and also I must, before I move on, I must also remind councillors that the 2016 council elections, Labour proposed a artificial turf for the Brisbane Women's Hockey Association, so they are aware of it as well. And at the recent 2020 elections, when the announcement of the car parking facility was built, the local Labour candidate, John T. Bush, who went on to become the MP for Cooper, shared on her page in response to my statement, "Too little, too late." That was the view of Labour at the recent elections. I, I also would insist that these measures were in a genuine response to ongoing community concerns. We released a draft in March, April, and disappointingly, around the time of the release, there was a hard lockdown and we had to bring all of our consultation to small groups, which made things really, really difficult. But we did address larger groups when the opportunity came, and I personally spent some hours upon hours consulting with people about how and when and what they would like to see. Part of the consultation created these five petitions. Of those petitions, I would like to take the time to point out to the chamber. Firstly, item B, is it a petition against a proposed bridge on Gould Road? The petition was against it, Gould, the proposed bridge has been removed. Item C, petition objecting to the relocation of softball from Downey to another park into the contiguous zone. Softball now will remain at Downey Park under the new proposal. Item D, requesting the draft precinct be revised, the precinct has been heavily revised. The items they sought were a revise of the plan to deal with the residents' concerns. It has been revised in line with their wishes. Revise the design of the survey, the literal survey, the feedback mechanism. It has been updated and changed in line with their wishes. Make available information, we have done so. Make myself and more senior managers available to the public, that has also happened. And, and provide, and consult further with the local residents, that also did happen. Item E, request the softball remain at Downey Park. Softball will remain at Downey Park. And item F, the requests were the removal of the planned car parks in the central precinct, that has happened. Remove the planned through road linking Langley Avenue to Murray Street, it has been removed. Safeguard the community tennis court on Market Street, it remains in its place. Leave the Dog Off Leash Park at Windsor rather than Wilston. It remains in Windsor rather than Wilston. Provide information to local residents and ratepayers regarding plans about the Langley Park remediation that was provided, and the Langley Park remediation has occurred. So I'd like to just say that the intention, the catalysing event was to try and make our sports facilities, particularly for women, even better, while addressing the concerns that those precincts put onto other local residents, onto the local residents who live nearby. There were some plans that were very, I'll use the word grand, I'll use, put it that way, I'll use that word. And when it was put to the public, there was a lot of concerns raised, and there has been significant changes. A second draft has been, a second draft has been released, and I can tell councillors, I'd like to inform councillors, the first, that we received one email in the first 48 hours of the release of that, of that draft, and I'll read it to you. "Hi there, I'm just writing about the revised plans for the Norrie Street area. I preferred the initial plans over the current one. I'm not sure why it's been so heavily revised, other than bound to pressure from the people that live in the streets around there, although there are many people in the community that use these parks and sports facilities. I think you massively sacrificed car parking in this new plan. The area needs more car parking spaces, and it's so difficult to find a space during the weekend, on the weekend with sport on. I would prefer to see more space dedicated to car parking and facilitating people use the area." So I would say to all councillors that it is a challenging site with competing interests and views. We continue to work with the community and the clubs to make sure that those facilities are even better and that the effect that they have on the local residents, on the neighbours, is much reduced.
Thank you, councillor Weins. Any further debate? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on the four petitions, B through F. I just want to put on the record my interest in this matter, which is that the representatives of the Netball Association, oh, sorry, representatives of the Softball Association contacted me about this plan, and they let me know about the meeting that was happening, the public meeting that was happening, and I actually attended the large public meeting on the site earlier this year. That seems like it was a long time ago, but earlier this year. I, I'm glad the Lord Mayor's actually not present, probably would be the best thing, and I certainly hope the deputy mayor's not going to stand up and claim, as they have with other community issues in this city, that these residents are fake, because it was clear to me that councillor Weins seriously misjudged the mood of the public meeting at the time, and was very disinterested and certainly patronising, I think, at that meeting. I'm glad to see that there has been some response to the concerns that have been raised in these petitions. However, this is, this is the, this is the biggest problem with what this administration does, and this is where I hope every single council officer up there, up there in Brisbane Square is listening. The Lord Mayor and councillor Weins went out and announced this giant election commitment of hundreds of millions of dollars on the basis of an idea. They then came back in after the election and said, threw money at it, go as big as you can, we want to create this ginormous precinct. They prioritised commercial sporting clubs over community sporting clubs. They wanted to disenfranchise one of the longest-serving tenants, which is softball, and they wanted to get rid of green space and build multi-storey car parks. So hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of residents who live around that precinct in multiple suburbs, Windsor, you know, Bowen Hills, went nuts, went absolutely nuts, that's the only word to describe it, with how badly wrong this council went with this precinct plan. The doctor that was leading the community action was a very reasonable man, who had a very clear objective with what he wanted to do, and I'm not quite sure if this is meeting his needs, but I feel fairly certain that the residents out there will provide some feedback. But the reason this happened is the unfettered bad management of this LMP administration combined with pork barreling in marginal LMP wards, and it went horribly wrong. If there were some upgrades to happen down there, that people would have been happy. I mean, councillor Weins said today that the issue was not enough car parking, well, that's every single sports field in Brisbane, every single sports field in Brisbane doesn't have enough car parking, every single street that's anywhere near any sporting facility in this city doesn't have enough car parks, it's very hard to solve that problem. So car parking, and two, hockey wanted an artificial turf wicket. Why then get rid of softball? Why try and put a commercial baseball team into a suburban park for not-for-profit community groups where families play sport? This is where the LMP went so badly wrong, and it was a combination of pork barreling, there's hundreds of millions of dollars attached to this project. So, you know, when you're basically on a waiting list to get a closed sports field remediated for $3.6 million, and you've been waiting almost a decade, it's galling to see hundreds of millions of to see hundreds of millions of dollars being spent on a project that the community did not want. And now councillor Wines has stood up and said, well, the only reason we were really doing it was for car parking and hockey. I mean, please, council officers in Brisbane Square, act independently, give good advice to the administration, don't just do what they ask you to do because this is where it goes so badly wrong. Hundreds of millions of dollars down the toilet, and I reckon it'll be millions just on the consultation process. I'm also fascinated to hear now that council officers have been meeting with these groups in some sort of public meetings. You can't get a council officer to speak at a public meeting in my ward, they just refuse to come out, they refuse to talk to people. So it is really concerning to me about how this project does unfold. It has significantly upset residents in that area. It is a very big and busy sporting precinct, I know because obviously I played sport there, my niece and nephew play sport there, it can be very chaotic, but so is every single sporting facility in our city. So I just, I just urge this administration, I still don't think you'll have got this right in a million years, start smaller. Just because you're in office, just because councillor Wines is in a marginal LMP seat you're desperate to hang on to, you don't have to throw money, you don't have to throw money at something to create this giant project when people are looking for good common sense solutions and upgrades to make the community sport that they enjoy and that they love doing better. And that's where you fundamentally went wrong. Turning this precinct into some sort of, I don't know, ridiculous sort of sporting precinct. So, I'm very pleased to hear that the concrete car parks have gone, because that was obviously a huge concern of the meeting. I'm also hopeful that softball will be retained, I just hope that doesn't mean, they were being moved, so I hope that doesn't mean, when they say they're being removed in the precinct, that they haven't been moved elsewhere, because the big concern was where they were being put within the precinct. So, you know, I just hope that some common sense prevails here, that there is some genuine feedback from residents that is taken on board, and the LMP needs to take a step back from this. It absolutely needs to understand that you don't need to throw hundreds of millions of dollars at this issue to fix it, you can do so with more common sense outcomes that are responsive to community concerns. I, I don't know, I personally, my observation would be, I don't think Andrew Wines could undo the damage that he caused at that public meeting to those people. So, I, I, I just think that the best we can hope for here is that council has gone completely back to the drawing board, has scaled these plans down, and will work cooperatively with residents to deliver the upgrades that they want, that reflects their needs, not the ideas of the Lord Mayor and councillor Wines. And clearly, putting in commercial sporting clubs instead of community sport is not a good idea.
Thank you. Any further debate? councillor Sri.
Thanks Chair, I rise to speak to the petitions regarding Inogra Creek Sport and Recreation Precinct, and I do have some sympathy with councillor Wines because I know it can be hard to reach agreement among residents when there's conflict over how public spaces should change and evolve, but fundamentally, I think there are.
Councillors, conversations outside, please.
There are two underlying problems that I think have led up to this point, and, and the first is a tendency in the administration to prioritise top-down, centralised decision-making, which doesn't meaningfully include communities at early stages of project planning. And I think it's perhaps predictable that when the council comes out with a, a large and wide range in concept plan for a park, having done relatively shallow, open-ended consultation beforehand, you're inevitably going to have a lot of pushback. And I think this highlights the difference between council engaging in consultation and what's often described as participatory planning. And that's, I think it's starting to become a bit more in vogue again in administrative councils around the world, but basically the idea is that you bring residents to the table as equal partners and collaborators in the process of design, rather than saying, hey, here's a draft design, what do you think? They give you some feedback, you take that back, you go out again, here's another design, what do you think? That's, even at the best, even when, when you do the best possible job of that kind of consultation, it's time intensive, people still feel left out, there's not good community engagement in terms of the details of why decisions are being made, and people inevitably end up happy, unhappy. Rather, participatory planning approach says, look, let's, let's get the community at the table and workshop different ideas and, and actually take a bit more time at the early stages to develop concept designs that everyone agrees with. And the, the closest local example I can point to is the process we used with Carl Street Park in Veranda, which also wasn't perfect, but the approach there was that we held community workshops where local residents had an open platform to suggest the kinds of changes they'd like to see in the space, to articulate what they'd like to, what they'd like to remain the same. And then we pulled out the butcher's paper and the little silhouettes of different park facilities, and we spent a couple of hours moving stuff around and seeing what would fit where. And then we came back and did it again, and then we had a third meeting about it, and then we put on a community festival and involved residents that way. It was a long and slow process, but we ended up making some fairly significant changes to that park and had, to my knowledge, very little negative pushback. In fact, I don't think we received any negative feedback at all, even though it was quite a substantial change to an inner-city park in close proximity to residential homes. And I think maybe the reason that that worked well is because we had allowed the time and energy for a participatory process, as distinct even from some of the other park projects I've seen in my ward, where we go in and say, this is what we're doing, any feedback, make some changes, and then rush it out. But the, the other reason I think that the Inogra precinct has become such a hot potato and a difficult issue for the council administration and for councillor Wines, is simply that there's an overall shortage of public green space in our city and that rapid new development hasn't been accompanied by sufficient investment in public green space. So, the council is tying itself into knots, trying to cram more and more intense uses into an existing park, area of parkland. You've got more sports clubs and with more members arguing for more space, you've got more residents who want less intense recre, green spaces that they can use for picnics, et cetera. You've got more demands for parking, even though we don't want to be encouraging more people to drive to these parks. I've got residents who live in the Gabb Ward who are driving all the way out to places like Inogra because that's their nearest accessible sport and recreation facility because there's such a shortage of green space in the inner city. So when you have that problem, an overall shortage of public parkland, and, what did I get? Oh, sorry, I don't know why I keep saying Inog, Inogra, Inogra Creek, yeah, no, thank you. The, the problem is that you don't have enough green space to go around and you're trying to make one stretch of parkland in one area do all the work. There's, there's no way you can please everyone when you're trying to cram so much into one area. It would be better to simply create, invest in creating new public parks around the city, including in the inner city, but also the middle suburbs, so that you're not trying to make one sports field or one, one sports precinct do everything all at once. And I think that's, that's what's made life perhaps really difficult for councillor Wines in this situation, because the council is trying to satisfy everyone when there's simply not enough room to satisfy everyone and, and meet the needs of all the different stakeholders and residents. So, I think this hopefully is a bit of a reminder and a wake-up call to the administration that it's not enough to just spend more and more money, put in, put in more and more stuff into existing parkland, you actually have to bite the bullet and outlay the capital and spend the money to buy some new blocks of land, or bring, bring new blocks of land into the council parks portfolio that can be established as parks. I know that's more expensive in, in the short term, but it'll make life a lot easier in the long term and will meet the long-term needs of a growing city. So, the, the council, I think, needs to move away from this idea that you can just keep cramming more stuff into existing parks and instead create new parks. That's what residents want to see happen, we're desperate for that in, in the inner south side. I know, I hear from a lot of residents in councillor Howard's ward who say that they don't have enough public green space for all the apartments that have been approved. I hear the same from people in councillor Maddox's ward, in Paddington Ward and in Walter Taylor. There's high rises and high density development going up all over the inner city, and it's not being accompanied by sufficient investment in public infrastructure and public parkland. That's why we've ended up with five, I think it is, very large petitions about one park master planning process. It's a, it's a symptom, it's a function of a broader failure at the city-wide level to, for, to provide enough green space to meet the city's needs. And, and that's, that's why, not, you're never going to be able to please everyone with this particular park project, because you're trying to make this one creek catchment and this one chain of parks do too much. So hopefully, hopefully the council administration will, will look at allocating a little more money towards park acquisition and the establishment of new parks in the near future, rather than throwing councillor Wines a hospital pass and, and forcing that one chunk of parkland to do everything. It's, it's simply unfeasible.
Thank you. Further speakers? councillor Howard, summing up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It is very important that I sum up to correct a lot of the misinformation that has been said on the other side of the chamber. And the very first thing that I want to say is to all of those council officers who are listening, as councillor Johnson said, to thank them. To thank them from the bottom of my heart for all of the hours and hours and hours and hours of work that they have put into this project. And can I say how disgusted I am that a councillor in this chamber would reflect poorly on our council officers and the work that they do? Can I just say, they have got.
Councillor Johnston, please.
So through you, Mr. Chair, and to those councillors listening, thank you. Those coun, those officers have, this is, this is the largest sports and recreation precinct plan that council has ever undertaken, ever. It is not a local park, it's hectares and hectares of area. We have two councillors that are responsible for it. It's, it's a sports precinct that has been there for almost a hundred years, it was given to women for women's sports. Our council officers, I, I started this conversation ten years ago with my community groups, in 2016, we were talking about it as part of our landfill remediation. We, we went out to the community in 2018, let me find this, eighteenth of October to the second of December 2018. We went out and talked to the community, we gathered all that information, and at that time, everyone was worried about car parks. So our officers diligently put the plan together. It was sent out for, for people to have their say, that's what a draft plan is, it allows people to have their say. And they did have their say, and we listened. And I also want to clarify that the local councillor, councillor Andrew Wines and I, personally, both of us, with our council officers, met with every single organisation. And as a result of those meetings, and as a result of the, the many, many people that, that put in their petitions, as a result of those petitions, as a result of the, the information that we received, a new draft plan has been presented and has been sent out to the community, to the community. I don't know where councillor Johnson thinks that our council officers talk at public meetings, because they haven't, but you know, that's what she says, she says it must be right. It's, it's just garbage. These officers have worked the way that they're meant to be working, with the community, with the councillors and with the organisations. We're about to go out and talk to the organisations all over again with the new draft plan. Are we going to get it a hundred percent right? Probably not! But for goodness sake, this is something that has been in the making for over ten years. It is the start of what we need to be looking at, it's a promise that we made, councillor Wines has attended public meetings, his door has been open to anybody who wants to talk to him, I know that councillor Maddick has been out talking to his community. I have listened and met with anybody who wants to meet with me about this particular plan. So to hear those on the other side saying what they say is just absolute garbage. So, can I say, the plan is now out until the fourth of February 2022. One of the longest periods of consultation that I think I've ever seen in this place. Fourth of February 2022. So those on the other side, you want to have your say, make sure you get in before the fourth of February 2022. I just want to finish, I just want to finish by once again, and this is important, because I think the things that have been said in this chamber about our council officers are just nothing short of apoloic. And once again, I say on behalf of councillor Wines and on behalf of councillor Maddick and myself, to the council officers, thank you.
Thank you, councillors. We're now moving this, the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report, item A only, item A, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We're now moving the five petitions, item B, C, D, E and F. Sari Adam, all in favour, please say aye. Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Division called by councillor Johnson and councillor Strunk. Clarks, please ring the bells. Councillors, the division is on items B, C, D, E and F in the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee report. All in favour, please say aye and raise your hands. Any opposed, please say no and raise your hands. Abstentions?
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seventeen in favour, one against and four abstentions.
Thank you, declare that carried. councillor Cunningham, the Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the ninth of November be adopted.
Seconded.
It is to be moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Landers, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, nine November 2021 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, any debate?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, just briefly, item A is the committee presentation, which was on bushfire evacuation sub-plans, and item B was the regular bank and investment report, and I'll leave comments to the chamber.
Thank you, any debate? councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to briefly speak on, on item A, the bushfire evacuation sub-plant, but more generally in regards to the disaster management capabilities of, of the city council, which I believe are, are quite, quite well designed and planned. There, there are some, some issues in regards to the sub-plans, but they're working on that. The comment I really wanted to make was a suggestion for the chair to take up, and that is. that is that the disaster management for the whole city, whether it be fire, flood, storm, heavy storm activity, there is a number of elements to a disaster management plan for the whole city. And as councillors, and I'll speak for myself as a councillor, I've been a councillor for a few years now, but I still don't really have a total understanding of how that all comes together. And I think some of the newer councillors here, and maybe some of the ones who've been here for a while, could benefit from maybe a half a day seminar with sitting down and listening to how it all comes together so that we have an idea of what we're supposed to do during a disaster, various disasters. And it may just be that we're just a source of information for our residents. We don't actually physically go necessarily out there and do any of that work that all those disaster management units do. But I just think it would be beneficial for me, and I think probably a few others, if we could just do a half a day seminar with councillors and maybe our ward advisors even, to have a full understanding of what can be, what our role is, and what we can do to better assist in when those disasters happen. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Through you, thanks to councillor Strunk for the suggestion, and perhaps we'd look at whether or not there'd be catering at that event, hey? Thank you.
Thank you. I move that Brisbane City Council allocates funding to upgrade pedestrian islands and ramps and to install zebra crossings or signalised pedestrian crossings as appropriate on the uncontrolled and unsafe slip lane at the intersection of Noble Street and Annalee Road Fairfield to provide safer crossing points to the new Dutton Park rail station and Brisbane South State Secondary College.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Sri, that Brisbane City Council allocates funding to upgrade pedestrian islands and ramps and to install zebra crossings or signalised pedestrian crossings as appropriate on the uncontrolled and unsafe slip lanes at the intersection of Noble Street and Annalee Road Fairfield to provide safer crossing points to the new Dutton Park rail station and Brisbane South State Secondary College. Is there any debate? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I moved this motion with councillor Sri's support, we've been talking about it for a couple of weeks. The intersection in question is the border between Tennyson Ward and the Gavva Ward. We have major pedestrian movements around this very busy intersection, which is the intersection of Cornwall Street, Noble Street and Annalee Road. It is currently a key link to the new Brisbane South Secondary State College and currently provides access to Dutton Park rail station. It is an intersection where I have tried before to have the uncontrolled left-hand turn slip lane, which goes from Annalee Road to Noble Street, signalised previously about a decade ago, and council said no at that time. The situation has become critical. A large new high school has been built across the road, and the Queensland state government has announced as part of the Cross River Rail project that Dutton Park rail station is to be relocated about 600 to 800 metres further south, meaning that residents who live north of this intersection, particularly in Dutton Park, will now have to cross the road, and that includes crossing an uncontrolled, very busy slip lane to get to the new station entrance. We already have an uncontrolled crossing point to the existing Dutton Park station, that's Cornwall Street, which has been the subject of multiple petitions and motions in this place, all of which have been rejected by the LMP councillors. It is just unreasonable in today's modern age that major public transport nodes do not have safe public transport, sorry, do not have safe active transport links. And that is a clear problem around Dutton Park Station. Dutton's Park Station also immediately joins a very large hospital and educational precinct at the PA and the University of Queensland schools that are associated with the hospital. The fact that we have uncontrolled crossing points across busy roads is just ridiculous in my view. This is a very simple fix. We could put a zebra crossing in on the uncontrolled slip lane, and that would be a cheap and effective option. We could put traffic lights in on the uncontrolled slip lane, which would be more expensive but a safer option. I would be happy with either, from my point of view, and that's why both options are in there. But we cannot, we cannot continue to allow children, commuters, residents just out walking, people trying to get to the hospital, nurses, doctors, we cannot allow them to continue crossing an unsafe, uncontrolled slip lane, particularly because there will be no other safe way for residents to get to the new station once it is moved further south. This would be a very low cost, a very low cost item for council. It clearly has, in my ward, councils just cancelled, you know, I don't know, what was it, about an $80,000 project at Urongpili? You wouldn't even need a tenth of that to put a zebra crossing down on the street. So I know that there is budget available to do this project. Actually, Brisbane City Council in my ward's cancelled the last two road projects it said it was going to do in my ward, and they haven't proceeded. So there is certainly funding available to do this. It would be a very sensible course of action to improve active transport links to a very busy school, university and medical health precinct, as well as the new Dutton Park station. And I encourage all councillors to support the motion.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks. Yeah, right to speak in support of the motion, and I know that there's a long list of unsafe intersections around the city that councillors feel need attention, but I think this precinct is particularly pressing by virtue of the fact that there's a major train station upgrade and relocation happening alongside this. The area in question is extremely dangerous and inaccessible as it is. There's no safe way for a person with impaired mobility to move through this intersection because there's multiple unsignalised, unprotected crossing points. I would encourage particularly councillor Murphy to have a look at this one, because I'm definitely going to be raising it with you if this doesn't get fixed. This is an access point to a train station. It's also on a walking route to a major hospital, and it's also on a walking route to the nearby high school. So there's going to be a lot of people moving through here. But again, it's one of those ones where I worry about a little bit of good-natured, inadvertent buck passing between the relevant portfolios, because this is fundamentally a pedestrian safety issue, which would appear to primarily be councillor Murphy's responsibility, but I understand that a lot of the decision-making power actually sits with councillor Wines. And so I guess I would urge all councillors in this chamber to take a close look at this precinct before you jump to any conclusions. I know through you, Chair, that councillor Wines has a lot on his plate. He's got a, I can only imagine, there must be a huge pile of documents about different road projects and transport infrastructure that's waiting on him to sign off on. But this one, this one is particularly important because it's quite time-sensitive. The state government is making its big redevelopment, it's already put its redevelopment plans for the train station out there. And council really has two options. Either we can fight tooth and nail to get the state government to fix these safety issues, and that would be great. And if the council's going to do that, then that would be welcome, and if you can get the state government to pay for the works and make the changes, then cool. If not, if not, then the council is going to have to fork out the money, because the suggestion that people have to cross a really busy, unprotected slip lane to get to the train station seems a bit laughable to me in a so-called new world city. This council likes to portray itself as being modern and progressive and all this sort of stuff. But if people can't even, if people can't even cross the road to get to the train station, all that rhetoric is just posturing and shallow spin. So I think that the issue is pretty self-explanatory, but just to reiterate, there are so many cars moving through this intersection now that there's often not a brake in the traffic in busy periods. So historically, when these unsignalised slip lanes were put in, the assumption was that the cars had moved through and the pedestrians would have a gap in traffic when they could duck across. But in busy periods, these intersections are so busy that there simply isn't a gap for a pedestrian to duck across in. That's why we either need signals, or a zebra crossing, or a raised wombat crossing. There are a range of design options available to council. But the point is that we can't simply leave things as they are, because now that the train station is moving there, there are going to be many more pedestrians trying to move across this intersection to get to the train station access point. So through you, Chair, councillor Wines, I hope, whatever the vote on this motion ends up being today, I hope you'll look at this one closely. I know how long your list of projects is to review and all that, but this one does merit special and close consideration, as I said, because of that train station redevelopment happening next door. I assume your officers have been in touch with the state government and will be talking about this as well. But the state government's plans don't show any improvements to these crossing points that councillor Johnson and I have raised. The state government seems to be saying, oh, that's outside the project boundary, it's not our job, which is pretty crap of the state government, to be blunt. I think it's a really, really...
They've actually been raising it.
Oh, the state government's been raising it with council? That's interesting. Yeah, unusual, to be honest. But either way, I just want to see the intersection fixed, I just want to see the slip lanes made safe. It shouldn't be too hard for a couple of adults to get together in a room and work out how to fix this. Councillor Murphy, it might be worth raising it in the Joint Active Transport Committee as well with the state government, because this does fall on that major cycling route that connects up to Annalee Road. This is all the cyclists who are coming from Annalee and Fairfield in the south. If they're not riding along the river via the Corso, then they're riding up through the Cornwall Street, Annalee Road, Gladstone intersection. So I know there are a lot of commuter cyclists as well who would really welcome improvements to these slip lanes so that they can get across safely. It is primarily a pedestrian crossing issue rather than a cycling safety issue, but like we keep saying, there's more and more pedestrians in this precinct in general. The, I'm pulling out my little near map ruler as we speak, because I just wanted to measure it. It's about, it's about 100 metres from the hospital site and a couple hundred metres from the high school. It's the direct access to a train station. It's the sort of crossing that, as a matter of common sense, really needs to have a pedestrian priority crossing arrangement. I, like councillor Johnson said, I'm agnostic as to whether signals or a zebra crossing or a wombat crossing is preferable, but something needs to be done here. At the very least, some money needs to be allocated immediately to some initial design work. But ideally, I think it should be a design and construct project as soon as possible. It would be a great tragedy if, as soon as the state government finishes their construction work... No, I'll rephrase that. It's not going to be a great tragedy, it would be really annoying. It would be really, really annoying if, as soon as the train station relocation project is finished and all the construction work is over, that then council comes back and says, okay, now we're going to do the crossing to get to the train station. You should do it at the same time. Don't wait until all the state government construction work is finished and then come in afterwards and start your own construction project. Do it all together as part of the same project. Get it done before the train station is relocated, that would be even better. Right now, there are already people who are having trouble crossing there, so this isn't something that has to wait for the state government. It doesn't have to wait for the Dutton Park train station project to begin. It's something that we should do now in anticipation of that train station relocation. If, yeah, it really is disappointing to me that the state government doesn't have a clear, clearly articulated plan to do this at the same time, but I think as it is a council road, ultimately the responsibility is going to fall with council one way or the other. So I do hope all councillors in this chamber will support the motion, and I welcome further discussion.
Further speakers? Councillor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak in relation to this motion. Chair, acting Chair, I've just done a quick search online and want to make the point that the Dutton Park rail station upgrade, which is part of the Cross River Rail project, and the Brisbane South State Secondary College are both state government projects. So I'm unsure why we are being asked to fund these works. If the works that the motion asks for were required as a result of the two state government projects, I would assume that the state government would be doing them. If they are not being done, I can only assume the state government reviewed the impact of their projects and considered these works were not a priority, or the projects would not cause a sufficient impact on the existing situation to warrant works being undertaken. If the state government has not considered either of these issues raised in the motion, it's imperative that councillors representing this area make representations to the state government to review these matters before these projects are completed.
Point of order, Chair? Point of order, councillor Sri. Will councillor Adaman take a question? Councillor Adaman, would you be happy to take a question?
No.
Sorry, councillor Sri. Please continue.
These projects happen to be in the backyard of the minister responsible for main roads, so perhaps a phone call to Mark Bailey might be in order. But Chair, it's not reasonable to expect ratepayers to foot the bill, and for that reason, I will not be supporting this motion.
Any further speakers? There'll be no one rising. We will now put the motion. So, oh, sorry, I reply, my apologies. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chairman. I guess I feel a little bit disappointed, but not surprised, unfortunately. This is the third time that I've, well, no, actually, this is probably the fifth or sixth time I've tried to have council roads have better pedestrian facilities put onto them. In this case, let me be clear, the transport chairperson of council, councillor Ryan Murphy, has failed to respond to this motion. He is the councillor responsible for public and active transport in Brisbane, and he did not have even a minute to speak to a motion to improve pedestrian safety in Brisbane around a very busy hospital, school and public transport area. This is not a state government responsibility. This is a council road. I don't actually have any state government roads in my ward, I only have council roads. So you go to the asset owner to ask them to fix the roads. Unlike councillor Adaman, I don't go necessarily off to another level of government with no responsibility for the matter. The responsibility is Brisbane City Councils.
Sorry. Councillors, if there's conversations, can they please be held in the antechamber? Are you with us or not with us, councillor Sri? Okay, thank you.
I see councillor Sri trying to speak to councillor Wines. He's the other person who could do something about this. He is the infrastructure chairperson. He did not have one minute to speak to this matter of importance about pedestrian safety today. Instead, councillor Adaman, who represents Pullenvale and Moghl and Kenmore, was given a written speech that he read out. So let's be clear, a road, a road that has hundreds and hundreds of people crossing it every day, including children, council road. The two people who are paid extra money to be the chairs of this place to take responsibility for the delivery of portfolio matters within active travel and infrastructure, neither of them could be bothered to speak, neither. And they're going to vote against putting in a zebra crossing across a slip lane to make it safer for children to get to school. In their own wards, they do this every single day, every single day. LMP councillors get improved facilities outside schools, and guess what? They're all state government schools. Every single day, LMP councillors get council facilities upgraded that are near state government hospitals. Councillor Hammond, I remember that one, out there, Princess, Prince Charles Hospital, that rode, that intersection, pedestrians moving the cars around. How much money got spent on that? How much money got spent on that? That's a state government responsibility. No, no. But in an LMP ward, we go out and do it. So that's a massive double standard going on. This is a council road. It should be upgraded by council, we're asking for a zebra crossing or a green walk light. There is an uncontrolled crossing point here. It is disgusting to me that the people in charge of this council can't be bothered to... to speak for a minute. It is disgusting to me that councillor Adaman has got up and read out a set speech about an important issue on the other side of the city that he knows nothing about, and it is just appalling to me that pedestrians' lives are going to be put at risk, and that this council that says it supports active travel absolutely and fundamentally does not. I want to thank councillor Shree for speaking up and supporting the motion before us today. I'm sure, like me, he will go out and tell his residents that the LMP council does not care about their safety, does not care about improving pedestrian facilities around Annalee and Dutton Park, and I just hope to God that no one dies and no one is hit by a car here, because the demand has become phenomenal around this area because of, you know, development that's happened, based on a council neighbourhood plan that actually upgraded it to be a high-growth area. And do you think they can even put a pedestrian crossing in? No, they can't. So I'd just say shame on you people, you are disgusting.
Point of order, Mr Deputy Chair.
Point of order, councillor Owen.
Mr Deputy Chair, I find the reflection by the councillor for Tennyson on people over on this side of the chamber referring to us as disgusting, to be offensive, and I ask that it be withdrawn.
Councillor Johnson, would you care to withdraw?
I'll rephrase, Mr Chairman. It is disgusting that they won't support it.
So is that a withdrawal or not a withdrawal? I would ask you to withdraw. No, that's okay.
Point of order, Mr Chair. I believe that councillor Johnston should respond to you via the appropriate way, via microphone.
Could you please withdraw? Councillor Johnson, could you please withdraw?
I'm happy to rephrase it, Mr Chairman, and say that their failure to support this is disgusting.
I would have been happier if you had a, did a withdrawal and then rephrased, but we'll work with what we've got. We'll now put, we'll now put the motion before us. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
Division.
Division.
So I believe the division is called by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Shree. Can I have the bells, please? (bell rings) As we've got most of the councillors in the chambers, we will now put it. All those in favour, raise your hand and say aye. Clerks, when you're ready, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the noes have it, the voting being four in favour and seventeen against.
The motion is lost. Council, we'll move on to the next items. Are there any petitions? Councillor Adams?
Mr Deputy Chair, I have a petition for removal of tuckaroo trees in Hallam Park.
Councillor Maddick?
Mr Deputy Chairman, I have a petition requesting council modify the slip lanes at the intersection of Butterfield Street and Bowenbridge Road, Hurston.
Councillor Strong?
Yes, I have a petition...
Oh my God, that's near a state government hospital.
Councillor Johnson?
I have a petition from residents in Forest Lake asking for a BMX pump track be installed across from the Forest Lake State School.
Thank you. Any further petitions? Can I have a motion, please, councillor Landers?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It's been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Griffiths that all the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. General business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or council ethics committee order? No, everybody's sitting down. Are there any items of general business? Councillor Shree?
Thanks, Chair. Just rise briefly to speak on the...sorry?
Please continue, councillor Shree.
Just rise briefly to speak on the Olympics impacts in terms of housing in my ward, and I've made a few comments about this previously, but as I read more of the market projections and the real estate industry data about what's going to happen to Woolangaba and surrounding suburbs as a result of the Olympics, I'm becoming increasingly concerned and really sad about what this is going to mean for our neighbourhood. I still don't think most councillors have quite grasped the scale of the Olympics. It's a hard thing to wrap your head around just how many additional people will be flooding into the city, but also the broader ramifications in terms of economic impacts to things like the housing market over the coming decade. What we're staring down the barrel of in suburbs like Woolangaba, West End, Kangaroo Point, and in fact, most of the inner city, is a mass dislocation of residents, the likes of which the city hasn't really seen in the past 200 years. The nearest thing we have that we can point to is probably Expo 88, but even that kind of pales in comparison to the scaled displacement that's likely to result from the Olympics. The current projections are saying that house prices in Woolangaba are going to hit $2 million over the next couple of years. These are houses that even a decade or so ago were going for a couple hundred K tops. And so this dislocation that's coming, it's not just uni students, it's not just a couple of share houses, it's thousands of renters, and not even just low-income renters, but middle-income renters. And it's also a lot of pensioners, it's also a lot of older residents who've retired, they maybe don't have a lot of other assets and they don't have other income streams, but because their property values are rising dramatically, their rate spills are also going to rise dramatically, and they won't really be able to realise the value on that home, so the property value, the asset value is going to be rising, their rate spill and cost of living is going to be rising, and they're going to be forced out of that community as well. And I think that's a really sad thing, and I think this administration has a responsibility to come to terms with what that means. I understand that Brisbane City Council after World War II, Brisbane City Council was involved in conversations about rent controls for the New Farm area and a few other areas of inner-city Brisbane, and I think actually it might have been the Conservative Party, someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but the sort of, the precursor to the LNP anyway, that was involved in instituting rent controls for some of those inner-city areas where there was a concern that low-income residents were being priced out and pushed out of the neighbourhood. And I think there are many models available, and I'm not strongly advocating for one particular model, but the point is that the council has to do something to stop all these people being pushed out of the neighbourhood. That's, I think, an ethical responsibility of this council, given that we are cheerleading for the Olympics and we are active proponents of this project or this event. The council, as a bare minimum, should be putting pressure on the state and federal governments to stop making people homeless. That's the least that the council could do. But I actually think the council should be going a step further. As I've said previously in this chamber, one of the simplest and most obvious things that Brisbane City Council could engage with is to stop residential homes being converted into Airbnb properties. This is already happening across the inner city. Thousands of residential homes are being converted into short-term accommodation, and as a result, local residents can't afford to live in their community anymore. And I'm feeling troubled that the council administration is sort of outsourcing responsibility or passing the buck or saying, oh, this isn't us, we're not the ones making these people homeless. But you're creating the economic conditions where that's the likely outcome. You're making zoning decisions, you're making event planning decisions, you're making investment decisions that are rapidly pushing up property values and are incentivising property investors to, A, leave homes empty rather than rent them out cheaply, or B, convert homes into short-term accommodation. And I think it's, I think it's really sad, the only word I can come up with, I could use more flowery language, but it's just sad to contemplate entire suburbs, entire residential communities being forced out just for some couple of weeks of an Olympic Games. Like, it just doesn't stack up. It's certainly not in the broader public interest, but if there is some deeper value I can appeal to, the councillors in this chamber, you know what a neighbourhood is, you know what a community is, you know what it means that there are people who've lived in the same street for 50 years and the neighbours help each other take the bins in, and when the kids are walking to school, everyone in the street's keeping an eye out for them, all that sort of stuff, that it's hard, it's hard to put a financial value on, you can't quantify that stuff easily. But we're talking about community, we're talking about something kind of fundamental to what we should be doing as city councillors and as elected representatives. We should be building community, we shouldn't be tearing it apart and fragmenting it. But what the Olympics is likely to do for my neck of the woods, and in fact, for a large part of the city, is to tear apart community, to fragment community, to force people out of their homes. And like I said, it's not just renters, I know some of the councillors in this chamber don't seem to give a crap about renters, it's homeowners too. But honestly, it's people of all ages, and in fact, people of most income levels. Based on the current market projections for suburbs like Woolangaba and Kangaroo Point, only the very rich are going to be able to afford to live there. Only the very rich are going to be able to afford to live in a suburb like Woolangaba, unless this council is proactive now about doing something to cool down that housing market and protect those low-income residents from being forced out of their communities. There are a range of mechanisms available, this council, as I've said, cracking down on short-term accommodation and stopping the conversion of residential homes into Airbnb, introducing rates incentives to discourage investors from leaving homes empty, using zoning frameworks that encourage the provision of public housing and low-cost affordable housing rather than just for-profit private development. There are so many mechanisms that this council could be adopting, and at the very least, this council administration should be saying to the state and federal governments, look, if you want to host the Olympics in inner-city Brisbane, you need to do something to stop thousands of people becoming homeless. Because you know who's going to end up having to deal with the problem? It's going to be council officers at the end of the day. If more and more people are getting priced out of their homes but they don't want to leave the community that they know and love, they're going to be sleeping in the park, they're going to be sleeping in their cars around South Bank and Kangaroo Point Riverside. That's where they're going to end up. It's not like they'll be able to afford to live at Caboolts or Ipswich, those places are already getting really expensive as well. There's nowhere left for these people to move to in many cases. And so I just ask all councillors in this place to examine your consciences and think about what it would mean for the residents you know in your electorates to suddenly find that in the space of a couple of years, their rent is doubling, their rate spill is doubling, they're being given notices to leave, they're being told that they have to move out because their home is being acquired for some, compulsively acquired for some Olympics facilities. This isn't something that's just affecting my ward, it's actually affecting councillor Howard's ward and councillor McLaughlin's ward as well, it's going to affect the entire inner city. But I'm particularly concerned about it because I don't think anyone else is paying enough attention to this. All I've heard about the Olympics is that it's going to be good for growth, it's going to be good for the economy, it's going to create more jobs. But I tell you what, a short-term temporary job as like a hospitality worker catering for the Olympics, isn't going to, isn't going to ensure that someone has enough money to pay the rent. We've got a real problem that we're staring down the barrel of here. I don't want to engage in hyperbole, I don't want to overstate it, but we, just the numbers, you look at the data, you look at the projections, you look at the results from other cities that have hosted the Olympics. We're talking about thousands and thousands of people being pushed out of their homes and pushed out of their communities. And I do not want this council to just pass the buck and say that's someone else's responsibility. Councillor Howard, through your chair, I know in your ward there are still a lot of low-income residents who are integral parts of the central ward community. They're the characters, they're the people who give that place life and vibrancy, and surely, surely you don't want them to be priced out of their neighbourhood and forced to move elsewhere just because of the Olympics. So I'm going to be talking about this again and again, I'm not going to stop bringing it up, but I really do hope that councillors in this chamber will think deeply about this. That's all I ask, at least have a think about it. At least have a think about what this council could be doing to stop people becoming homeless. We already have around 10,000 residents in Brisbane City Council's area who are experiencing homelessness, we're on track to have thousands more unless this council takes some stronger action.
Councillor Shree, your time has expired. Councillor Cook? No? Any further general business? No one rising. Councillors, we now, we now move on to the adjourned motion moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Shree, I think it was.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I put to the chamber that that motion actually be withdrawn.
That's a motion to have it withdrawn?
It has been resolved, thank you.
Okay.
Seconded.
We have a motion moved by councillor Cook, seconded by councillor Adams to withdraw the motion previously. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it.
The motion cannot be withdrawn by the mover of the motion, so we need to signify.
We're going to have an adjournment for one minute. Just a technicality. Give me one second. Councillors, we're just going to take an adjournment for five minutes to find out if that last motion was technically accurate. Deputy Mayor?
I'm sorry, it was not the paper because it was on the papers.
No, it's been withdrawn, so therefore, according to the local law, it can only be withdrawn by the person who moved it. So let me see if the deputy leader of the opposition...
Point of order, point of order. If the mover's not present, and he can't withdraw it and no one's prepared to move it, then it must lapse and it's over.
It's already, sorry councillor Wines, the motion's been moved already.
Have it been moved, your chairman's motion?
So we moved it. Seconded.
Oh, we're supposed to, if we were removing it, then councillor Cook...
Well, could remove it and then withdraw it? Councillors, see you in five minutes.
Yes, but we've got more, so we can still...
All right. Councillors, with the last motion, we cannot do it because the mover of the original motion is required to withdraw, so understandably councillor Cassidy is not here. We can adjourn the motion until next week and then withdraw it. And councillor Cassidy can formally withdraw it then.
So, Mr Deputy Chair, I move that we adjourn the motion on the papers here today until next week.
Do we have a second? We have councillor, sorry, councillor Adams, adjourning the motion on the papers until next weekend and seconded by councillor Hutton. Thank you. All those in favour? All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against? The ayes have it. Thank you councillors, I declare the meeting closed.